Welcome to the Norwood School Committee Meeting of Monday, August 10th, 2020. Once again, we're coming at you remotely. This evening, four of the school committee members are here. Ms. Anne Marie Mizola was unable to attend. As always, Dr. Thompson and Dr. Wyatt are here, and we will also be joined as we go throughout our meeting with a number of our administrative team. First up on the order of business is approval of minutes. And we do have in our packet two sets of minutes from August 5th. One is the open meeting, and the second is the executive session. There are motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Maya. Have any discussion on the minutes from August 5th? All in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Okay, 4-0, great. Dr. Thompson, do we have any correspondence this evening?
Not that I've received.
Okay. And Dave Catania, no warrants that you signed this week, correct?
No warrants.
Okay. So that does bring us to our public forum. And once again, we do have a number of emails that have come in to our email address. As a reminder to the community, if you have something that you would like us to read in public forum during a school committee meeting, that email address is npschoolcommittee@norwood.k12.ma.us. Our next meeting after tonight will be on August 26th. So anything that is sent to us after tonight will be read during public forum on the 26th. Tonight, however, we do have nine emails that we have gotten. So once again, you'll be listening to me for quite a while as I read the emails on behalf of our community members. The first email that we got for public forum is from Dr. Maureen Magnin. And she writes to us, "Dear Norwood School Committee, as an educator and coordinator myself in sharing public schools, I wanted to say that considering this challenging time, I appreciate how Norwood has communicated with our community throughout this difficult pandemic. I believe you will make the right decision in what is best for our community in either choosing remote or hybrid for our children. If either happens, I wanted to advocate for the extended day program for both of my children in grade one and an upcoming kindergartner. They have been attending the extended day program this summer and love it. It has been amazing for them to be safely socializing and learning with the program as they adhere into the guidelines, but also giving the kids opportunities to be with each other and learn. If we went full remote or hybrid, I would be thrilled if I could continue to send them to the extended day program for the day in the fall to help guide the kids throughout the remote learning plan. As two full-time working parents, we want to advocate for the district's extended day summer program to cover the extra weeks before school starts, and for it to be available at all of the elementary schools to promote equity and fairness and to eliminate the busing fees for all enrollees. We advocate for them to provide partial or full day coverage during remote learning days, including if the district starts with fully remote. To the extent the Savage Center can accommodate 1 to 10 ratios in each of the nine classrooms they rent and pay to NPS each month, as no busing will be needed, but they can be open six or eight hours. The before-school program should be available to parents utilizing tables to separate students in what will be their classrooms at 8:30 a.m., such that the cohorts are not disrupted and parents are still able to utilize the morning services as needed. If reduced after-school schedule is needed to accommodate custodial duties at the school site, the extended day program should not close before 5:00, a change in one hour from 6:00 p.m. I love the teachers and leaders at Extended Day and advocate for them to keep their positions as I have seen such a positive difference in both of my kids' attitudes, personalities, and overall outlook on life the minute they got back into the extended day program this summer. I would love for the opportunity for them to still feel like they are a part of the community and their school through Norwood Extended Day. Thank you sincerely for all that you are doing to equitably serve the children and families of Norwood. Sincerely, Dr. Maureen Magnin, and she is located at 10 Glendale Road in Norwood." The second email that we receive for public forum tonight also has the title of Extended Day Services. This one is from Alyssa Abrams. "Good evening, Dr. Thompson and members of the school committee. First of all, I wanted to say thank you for all of the hard work you have been putting into trying to do what is the best option for our town to get students back to learning in a safe way. However, I did want to bring attention to part of the conversation that is not talked about very often: childcare. I know that education and childcare are not synonymous, and one should not be dependent on the other, but the unfortunate reality of the situation is that it is. Norwood is very lucky to have a wonderful extended day program that has the capability and space to be able to assist. I know it has been mentioned that any extended day services provided would most likely be done at each of the individual schools and only on the days the children are in school buildings. However, I think only utilizing the program in this limited capacity is wasting the resources that can be used to help assist us through this unprecedented time. The Norwood Extended Day Program has a great staff, and the new additions to the program with Kristen Capizzo at the helm have been wonderful. I see that the summer program has been a success despite the limitations due to the pandemic. Because of this success, I believe that the summer program should be extended for an additional amount of time since the school year has been pushed back for at least 10 days. It would be very helpful to the families in the district to have an additional resource for at least a couple of more weeks so parents can feel that their children are in a safe and enriching environment. This program has already been cleared to go as it has been going all summer. If they have the staff to continue and in no way interferes with preparations of the school buildings for it in person, there seemingly appears to be no harm in considering it. In addition to the above suggestion, I think the Extended Day Program would be a great assistance to all working parents during days of remote learning, including fully remote learning. Children could partake in their remote classes while at the program at the Savage. I know they are set up with numerous classrooms and could retain the smaller ratios that we were trying to obtain in the schools with cohorting. While I feel that cohorting is a safe way of keeping exposure at schools down, the reality of the situation for many children of working parents is that they need childcare no matter what the situation. Having the Extended Day Program available for families of NPS would greatly limit possible exposure to other unknown sources in remote days. Not only would children be in a controlled and safe environment, but the program would facilitate learning. They would not be able to, nor should they, bus any children, but they are in the spaces at the Savage Center and paying rent, so they may as well be operational. Extended Day also provides essential morning services to the district and should continue to do so at the schools while in-person instruction is going on. These are just a few points that needed to be brought to the attention of the school community about the Extended Day Program, and how instead of thinking about it as an afterthought in the school opening process, it should be thought of as a valuable asset that can be utilized in conjunction with the schools to help NPS navigate these new educational times. Again, I thank you for all your hard work and dedication to our children in town. Sincerely, Alyssa Abrams, parent and town meeting member for District 7." Third email, titled Public Forum, for Monday, August 10th, 2020, comes to us from Michelle and Chris Frioli, who have identified themselves as parents of a fourth grader and kindergartner. "Dear Sir and Madam, we have two children in the Norwood Public School System for the school year 2020-2021, an incoming kindergartner and an incoming fourth grader at the Callahan. As with many families, we have been unable to plan for the upcoming school year due to the pandemic and little guidance previously issued as to how the school year may look, the days, the hours, etc. My husband and I both have full-time jobs, which we need to pay the bills. I am unable to work remotely. My husband is an aide-in-datum who has yet to release the requirements as well for the school year, so we do not know if he will be remote or in the classroom. As such, we are out of capacity with what we are able to do for the days our children will not be in the classroom. I have previously reached out to our previous preschool provider about having the girls there when not in school, but the recommendation from the state was that they are not allowed to accept students who will be part-time. With that being the recommendation, I am not sure any place that we will contact regarding care for the three days that the children are not in school will give the same response. While I understand and agree with the need to have a hybrid schooling, as the schools cannot be adapted to be safe for full-time in-school learning, I do think that the discussion of where the younger children will be when not in school is just as important. Unlike the older kids, I cannot leave my five and nine-year-old at home alone. I am also not able to bring them to work with me on the days they will not be in school. I am not able to bring them to the daycare facility as it's the recommendation that they not be accepted part-time. So I am at a loss of what to do during the three days that my girls will not be in the classroom. We are not in the income range to afford a nanny to come to the house to help the kids. I am originally from out of state, so I do not have family that can step in and assist us. I know that Kristen and the Extended Day Community has been working hard to resolve some of these issues. I have seen that they have come up with some solutions to maybe not all of the issues at hand, but certainly significant improvement over what we are faced with if there are no extended day options. While we have not needed to use the Extended Day Summer Program today, we would need to utilize it for the first two weeks before classes resume for the kids. All summer, my husband has been home with the kids. He is due back in the classroom on August 31st to learn the remote learning process at Dedham, and will be onsite for the first two weeks of September. We do not have alternative childcare for this. For the days they are not in class, I would like to take advantage of the option for them to attend Extended Day at the Savage Center. Even if I am able to work from home, I will not be able to assist them in their learning, which at their ages, they will not be able to do on their own. I don't think that there will be any additional exposure as the same students will be the same cohorts that they attend school with. I do not see that having them attend the Savage Center for the alternate days are adding risk for them or us. We have utilized the Extended Day Program for the afternoons while my husband and I are still at work. I would not make it back from Boston in time for regular pickup. Without the Extended Day Afternoon Program, we would need to hire someone to pick up the children from school. This would also increase exposure by having another person enter and stay at our house while we are still at work, not to mention that there are tax implications that would come out of having someone at our house to watch the kids for this extended period of time. There is the household employee tax rules that could be triggered, which I do not believe they have given any relief from during the pandemic. While the pandemic has offended the lives of all of us, I do truly believe that it is the younger children that have had it the hardest. My youngest, at five, is still learning the social aspect of interactions with others. Having this pandemic and having her isolated from all others was extremely hard on her. While she has been able to communicate via technology, I can see the backslide, not in the learning of books and educational materials, but in how these young children communicate with each other and interact and their expectations of each other. I think it will be hard and get harder for them to relearn the social norms and social acceptances the longer they are all kept apart from each other. I think that the Extended Day Community has come together with solid plans to keep the kids safe, educated, and social. I think that their plans need to be incorporated into the overall back-to-school plan. Looking at the hybrid return to school in a vacuum is not serving the overall community. The Extended Day Community is important to many families in the school system. The craziness of what it takes to get them enrolled each year supports the fact that there are large numbers in the community who rely on the additional services to keep their employment. I support the Extended Day Community and the resources they provide and the solutions they have presented. They have kept the safety of the kids in mind while trying to meet the needs of the overall school community as best they can. There is no perfect solution, and not everybody will be happy, but without their services, it will make this difficult transition even more difficult. Regards, Michelle and Chris Frioli." The fourth email that came in for public forum tonight is from Jen Bertucca. She is also writing about Extended Day, and her email reads, "Dear school committee members, thank you for taking the time to read this. I have two children who attended the Extended Day Program, and I have been thrilled that they were able to attend the summer program this year. Giving them a little bit of normalcy has done wonders for their mental and physical health during this stressful time. I am hoping that the school committee will allow the program to be extended now the school is not starting until mid-September. Having the program last until school starts will greatly help working parents in keeping the children in a routine that they enjoy. I also hope that Extended Day will be able to offer services to parents during remote learning days as well. My husband and I both work full-time, as most families do, and working while trying to help our young children learn early this year was extremely difficult. I thought Norwood did an excellent job with remote learning this spring, but it was very difficult with young children who needed constant supervision and assistance to complete their assignments while parents are working essential jobs. My children have gone to the Extended Day Program for the past three years, and I hope that they will continue to have this option this fall regarding before and after care on days when children attend school in person. Having this program takes the burden off the shoulders of working parents. I understand due to busing, it may not be available at the Savage, but hopefully a plan can be worked out to have it at the individual schools. I hope the committee will do the best they can to help their students and families have more options for childcare during this difficult time. Again, I thank you for your time, Jen Bertucca." Our fifth email this evening for public forum. I'm going to apologize in advance with the pronunciation of this family's name. I really am sorry. Shabaza and Ivy Nasu. And they write to us, "I am writing this letter to advocate for the Norwood Extended Day Program. As a resident of Norwood for almost 10 years, I feel it is important that the school committee and district leadership team hear from other stakeholders, parents, regarding the school reopening plan. My husband and I are both considered essential workers. I work as a nurse practitioner and my husband as a marketing director of business banking for a bank. On behalf of our family, I want to convey the importance that the Norwood Extended Day plays in our lives. We have three boys, twins ages six and a one-year-old. As a family, our work hours vary, and we are grateful for the Norwood Extended Day family. Our twins have attended the Norwood Extended Day for before and after school all of the last year in kindergarten. They are also currently attending the summer program as well. Currently, the summer program is slated to end on August 21st, 2020. However, if this happens, we do not know what we will do as we cannot work from home, and obviously, our children need to be cared for safely. It is our hope that the district will extend the Norwood Extended Day Summer Program a few extra weeks to coincide with the new school reopening plan, no matter what format that is in. As we would be at a tremendous loss if it closes, as currently slated for August 21st, 2020. Secondly, as parents who are essential and not able to work remotely, it is our recommendation that Norwood Extended Day Program also be available to provide full-day coverage during remote learning days, including if the district starts with full remote, to the extent to which the Savage Center can safely accommodate each month and be open for at least eight hours. It is our understanding that Norwood Extended Day runs out space at the Savage Center from Norwood Public Schools, and so it behooves Norwood Public Schools to have the services for the families. Additionally, the Extended Day Program should be available once school reopens in whatever format at all the elementary schools to promote equity and eliminate bus fees for all enrollees. The before-school program is also something that our family utilized last school year, as well due to our work hours. It is essential that the before-school program also continue next school year safely, perhaps using tables to separate students in their respective classrooms. This will allow for minimal interruptions for cohorts and parents who rely on this service. If a reduced after-school schedule is needed to accommodate custodial duties at each school site, please note that the Extended Day Program should not close before 5:00 p.m., as this will allow enough times for families to pick up children. Extended-day teachers and staff, some whom have been present for over 20 years are an integral part of helping our students safely. It is imperative that the teachers and staff maintain their positions. My children have bonded with the current staff, and it is important during this unprecedented time that students are surrounded by supportive people who they know. Also, the teachers and staff have bonded with the parents as well, and knowing the staff helps ease the worries that many parents face during this time. As a family that started using extended day services since last academic school year, I have seen changes initiated by the Extended Day Leadership Team. It is my hope that the program continues to grow in a similar direction as I would like for not only my current children, but my younger children to also benefit from Norwood Extended Day. I know that there are many questions, concerns, and changes that are under review. It is my hope that the district school committee and leadership team understand the significance that Norwood Extended Day provides to this great community. It is also essential to understand when planning for reopening schools, one must consider childcare as well because these are not mutually exclusive and must be simultaneously addressed. As essential workers, I hope my letter serves as a reminder that families are dependent on childcare when also addressing school reopening in order to function safely. As I help others in need daily at work, it is my plea that I have help in caring for my children safely. We have been pleased with the Norwood Extended Day, and we highly recommend that you consider our request. Thank you for your time and consideration. Kind regards, Mr. and Mrs. Nasu, located at 73 Monroe Street." Our sixth email tonight for public forum comes from Katie Nalbrizo. "Miss Nalbrizo writes to us, members of the school committee. I am writing to express my concern of the financial ramifications of a hybrid school model. As one of the chairs of the One Norwood Committee formed to pass an operational override, it is difficult to see the benefit of spending an extra $1 million-plus to hire the 20 additional teachers that it is said would be needed to run the hybrid model. I believe it would put the district in a significantly worse position fiscally than where we fought so hard for the district to be at at this point. I also think that outsourcing of our students' education to a company would not only be expensive, but it would cause a further imbalance between the experiences of the students in the hybrid model and those students who are immunocompromised or those of family members who are and do not have the option to even semi-safely attend school in person. I hope everyone understands that regardless of your decision tonight, we are putting all of this time and stress into trying to bring to life a hybrid model that will likely only work for a few weeks at a time before we likely have some type of exposure and subsequent quarantine. I believe the inconsistency of flowing in and out of hybrid and remote will have as much of a negative effect on the mental health of our students as being out of school has. Consistency and routine is what our children need most right now for their mental health. I cannot imagine the stress the teachers, administrators, school committee members, and leaders in Norwood have been under. I know that you are all doing your best to figure out what is best for our district, our teachers, and our students, and I thank you for your commitment to our community." This again is from Katie Nalbrizo, a mother of three Norwood Public School students. Okay, your seventh email this evening for public forum, titled Reopening of Schools, comes to us from Mara Smith. "Members of the school committee, first, I would like to thank you for all the hard work and dedication that you each put in for the people of Norwood. As someone who, until very recently, was a member of the committee, I am perhaps in a unique position to understand the commitment you put in as well as the very difficult decision you are facing regarding the reopening of schools this fall. I would also like to thank the administrators, teachers, and staff who have put in countless hours this spring and summer to work on planning for a safe and successful school year. The guiding principle of the Norwood Public Schools has always been the safe, equitable, and successful education of every Norwood child. And I want to applaud everyone in the Norwood Public Schools for the work they have done to maintain this during this incredibly challenging time. I understand that as you wrestle with whether schools should begin remotely or in a hybrid model, you are not facing many good options. If you go with a full-remote model, you would likely be making it very difficult for families to arrange for childcare and for parents and guardians to balance their commitments to work while also helping their children with their learning. If you decide to begin instead with a hybrid model, you must make very difficult planning and financial decisions to try and ensure it will be effective. And of course, you run the risk of students, teachers, or staff becoming infected with COVID-19. Considering that neither of these options comes without concern and difficulties, I believe that it is best to go with the option that possesses the least amount of risk for the most number of people, which, in my opinion, is beginning the year remotely and then transitioning to a hybrid model later in the year. I worry that there are far too many logistical and safety details that cannot be managed by the start of the school year. For example, while I know that the policy right now is that every student, teacher, and staff member will have to wear a mask before entering a building, details about the types of masks allowed have not been outlined. This is an area where specificity is paramount. Bandanas offer very little to no protection. Well, cotton masks with multiple layers are far more effective. This is one area where the science is coming more into focus daily. Gators or neck masks, which have been sold with the Norwood Mustang logo on them as part of fundraisers, was recently identified as part of a district/university study to be one of the least protective options available. The CN report on the study can be found here, and Ms. Smith shared the link. I know she also emailed the entire school committee, so it should be in your inbox to review that report. In order to ensure that everyone is safe, we need to be clear, specific, and rooted in the science when decisions and policies are put into place. However, as the face mask example shows, we are still learning about this virus, how to stop its spread, and most alarmingly, how it impacts children. The fact that more than 97,000 children nationwide were infected just within the last two weeks of the month of July, which seems to be a direct result of schools and camps around the country reopening, cannot be discounted. While Norwood has done very well so far with keeping our numbers of cases fairly low, we must be aware that in issues of public health, no community exists in a bubble. A large number of our staff and teachers live outside of Norwood, and some live outside of the state. So we cannot assume that only people from within Norwood's borders will be entering the school buildings. As long as cases are rising, both in Massachusetts and in neighboring states, I don't see how bringing people together for in-person learning is feasible. While, of course, the health and safety of everyone in the Norwood Public Schools community is first in everyone's minds, I am also worried about the financial implications of the hybrid model as it has been presented. Based on the presentations I have seen, it seems that the hybrid model will need additional funding due to the increased need for staff. This combined with the cutting of the Student Opportunity Act, I believe would leave the district in need of a significant amount of additional funding for the fall, and I am concerned about whether this will be fiscally possible at this time. In closing, I know that everyone is anxious for in-person learning to resume. As the governor said last week, it is incredibly challenging to try and teach a student to read through a computer. However, I encourage you to not rush into a hybrid model that is not assured of success. Instead, I would advocate for a slow and cautious approach. By beginning the year remotely, you give students, teachers, and staff the best possibility to start the year in the way that Norwood students have always, in a safe, equitable, and successful manner. Thank you for your time and attention, Mara Smith." Our eighth email of the evening for public forum is from Ms. Erin Ginnon, and she writes, "Dear school committee members, I write this letter to advocate for childcare this fall. The Norwood Extended Day team has wonderful ideas for assisting families in the community, and my family backs them 100%. Last year, our son took part in Extended Day full-time after childcare after-school program, and he loved it. The team is outstanding, the organization of the program was great, and parents receive clear and updated communications at all times. This year comes with many challenges, but it is wonderful to see the Norwood Extended Day team thinking outside the box and pulling together a plan to assist all the parents and children. The idea the team has regarding helping children in a 1 to 10 ratio during the distance learning part of school is an amazing idea that would clearly help my family and provide a need. The team is proactive about thinking about fairness and equality, having Extended Day present at the individual elementary schools, which would eliminate busing fees for families. The team continues to strive to assist families with the before-school program and understands the need to accommodate families who work past 5:00 by not closing their doors before 6:00. My son would often come home with stories about the amazing teachers at Extended Day, and they are an important part of this plan. My family advocates to keep these amazing teachers employed and at each elementary school. They all show amazing dedication and patience to each and every child and an integral part of the learning for the children. The Norwood Extended Day team has worked hard to work this out in a safe and accommodating way, and my family supports these changes they are looking to make. We love this direction they are taking and pulling this together in record speed, and with careful thought only validates our utmost trust in the leadership team and program. We appreciate what everyone has done during this time and are hopeful for the future of our son and children of Norwood. More regards, the Ginnon family." The ninth email for public forum that came in right before we met comes from Ms. Jody Smith, who is the president of the Norwood Teachers Association. And Ms. Smith writes to us, "Dear members of the school committee, I am writing to you this evening on behalf of the Norwood teachers. We all understand the impossible situation that you find yourself in. The teachers are also feeling that they are in an impossible situation as they are trying to balance the concerns for and the caring of their families and doing what is best for students. Teachers all over this town want nothing more than to be in front of their students as soon as possible, but not until it is safest to do so. Over the course of the last week, teachers were surveyed as to how they felt about returning to start the year remote or hybrid. With 361 responses, 68.7% felt that returning remotely would be the safest, and 31.3% felt the hybrid would be the way to go. We are all aware that this is an ever-changing situation with many moving pieces. Every day presents new challenges. Through the various task force meetings, concerns have been raised surrounding health and safety protocols. The guidelines that have been presented by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education The guidelines that have been presented by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education will make it so that what the teachers do best to support our students will not be possible. We will have to stay six feet away. Think of preschool students or kindergarten children sitting at desks, unable to interact with the children at their tables because there will be no tables. Imagine trying to tie your shoe from six feet away. Vital components at the elementary level are small group work and meetings on the rug, both of which will be missing. Instead, imagine all students in rows of desks facing forward. Also missing will be the ability to comfort that reluctant first grader on the first days of school. While at the high school level, each class will meet in person for only one hour of face-to-face instruction each week. Remaining class time will all be online. Social time at the secondary level in the hall, at lunch, or before and after school will also be gone, not to mention the uncertainty of after-school activities. Some classes at the middle school will be in a tent. All of this begs the question, is hybrid the way to go? There have been countless teachers, administrators, and staff that have worked way beyond their contractual time this summer to try and make things the best for our staff and students, and to them I say thank you. The amount of anxiety and true concern and wanting to do the best thing for all involved has been communicated to me on a daily basis by the teachers in Norwood. The school committee and the administration have always erred on the side of caution, and I am asking you to do the same in this unprecedented situation. Sincerely, Jody Smith, President of the Norwood Teachers Association." Those were the emails that came in before we started our meeting. I am just double-checking my inbox that nothing came in as I read all of those. The NPS School Committee address, and I do not see any further emails for Public Forum at this time. So at 5:49 August 10th, I am going to declare Public Forum closed. So now moving along on our agenda is announcements. Any announcements, Dr. Thompson?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, and we do not have any appearances separate on the agenda, but I know we have appearances built into your report. So, Dr. Thompson, next on our agenda is the reopening plan.
All right, well, let me pull up the actual draft of the documents. Okay, can everybody see that?
Looks like it's opening. Okay, it's open.
Okay, so, starts off with a table of contents, so I won't go through everything in there, but it definitely has the ability to jump around in. Letter from the superintendent talking a little bit about the process. I would like to point out at this time that the only way the Norwood Public Schools could fulfill all of the expectations that come with our schools that we have previously filled would be to not have a pandemic, not have not have to do social distancing and personal protective equipment and all of those things. So currently, no matter what model is presented and adopted by the school committee, it is fundamentally impossible to do what we have done in the past based on the present situation. We are dealing in a totally new landscape. It is not that the Norwood Public Schools wants to limit bus riding, or extended day, or extracurriculars, or have to have people do school in shifts. This is not our desire, this is our situation. So, I just want to make that very clear to everybody out there. The other thing I would like to make very clear is that we are proposing a hybrid option to start. And I say "to start" in quotes. That might be as we get further into the planning and the orchestrating. This is a large district with nine different buildings. We still have yet to figure out transportation and a few other things that we might have to, you know, have some staging going on here and not necessarily jump in with two feet at once. But we also have a commitment to educate our students, and we also have an opportunity where case and infection rates are low. We don't know if we put off waiting to work with our students, whether we will still have that ability later on in a, in a safe way to do a reasonably safe way to meet our students. The other thing I will point out, and I have mentioned this before in previous, in, in previous presentations, is that, you know, we're also waiting to find out about federal funding. And I was, I'm sure, share this with many of you out there disappointed in the fact that the news from Washington was not good and that we did not get a second CARES Act or HEROES Act, or whatever we wanted to call that includes federal bailouts for states and schools. So part of the financial piece of this will be getting some of that, that money. We have some state money at this point, but it does not fill all the holes. So we need to get to a point where we are looking at the fiscal piece of it as well. We, we, you know, we, we need to move to a point where we can get hard numbers and create a budget and then look at how it's, it's going to be done. There is the possibility that if this funding does not come through, it might not get done, or if it does not come through in a way in which we can make the ends of the rope meet in the middle, that we're able to do it. But looking at what is best for students, the advantage we had last spring when we went to remote is that we already had built relationships with students. We had already built routines. Students had already used different materials and technology in the classroom with, under their teacher's guidance. So moving from there to a remote environment was somewhat easier. There still was learning on the fly that went on last year. We learned an awful lot from that experience. But I am, I am concerned that if we do not start building relationships, checking in with students, several people in letters we just heard talked about the change when students were brought together, even in a limited fashion, through summer programming. So, you know, to put that off, I don't think is a great idea. So the executive summary, the first thing we start off is we talk about the, the different subgroups of our task force and, and their work. And, you know, obviously, there's a lot of people to, to thank on this. You can see the leads and the people working on those different committees. There's a lot of hard work put into that, looking at data, looking at responses from, from surveys to try to arrange and solve problems as we move forward. So, then we get into defining key terms, you know, synchronous, basically, teaching and learning at the same time. Asynchronous does not happen at the same time. So synchronous would be in the classroom, the teacher getting the lesson, or perhaps with the teacher in a Zoom meeting, getting the lesson. Asynchronous would be something that perhaps is recorded or work that is assigned for people to work on independently. Oops, and let me undo that, this is the problem with working in. All right, so then we get into the school safety and operations piece. And this section highlights all of the protocols and procedures that we worked on in conjunction, our, our school's health staff, led by Dr. Friskel, along with the Department of, of Health here in Norwood, led by Segal Reese. And these have been vetted and checked several times over and meet all the procedures that we should have, and they are in concert with the Department of Education guidelines with a leaning towards the more conservative CDC guidelines. You see at the bottom that there is a family screening tool. What, one thing that we will be doing is we will ask that families daily go through the screening, much like, I can actually bring that up here. These are all hyperlinks in this document, so let me bring that up. And you can see, you know, is my child feeling well today? Have they had to have fever-reducing medication? So it goes through all of this. So we are working on asking, asking parents to do that daily and to certify that they have been doing it at some point in time during, maybe weekly. Okay, and then beneath that, you will also see a staff screening tool, which is similar but a little bit different. Statement here about all students coming to school wearing a mask. Okay, and that, that will be a requirement. The school committee did have their first vote.
That, Thompson, sorry, your screen is not sharing.
Oh, get it? Okay, sorry, let me go back. When I close that tab, it obviously disappeared on me. Things you, all right, hang on a second. There we go, sorry about that, folks. Maybe I won't click on any other links. All right, let me know when you can see that. Good chance to get a sip of water.
Okay, it's back.
So there is a staff screening tool as well that we will ask staff to use on a daily basis. And as the school committee did do the first vote on the, on the mask-wearing policy, you'll see that that is in here as well. You know, we are going to be scheduling mask breaks so kids get a, get a break from wearing the mask during the day, get some fresh air, some movement in there as well. And again, that is within medical and, and developmental and special needs areas as well. We will keep those in idea. However, if we have someone that is being, being defiant in, in wearing a mask, we have outlined a procedure to do that, asking that verbal redirection in the classroom, a conference in the hallway with the student, asking them to comply, then meeting with the school nurse, and again, trying to get the importance of everybody participating in the protective behaviors that we're asking. And ultimately, if we have to or cannot get compliance, and there is not a reasonable reason for non-compliance, we would look to maybe move that child to a remote learning situation. And again, it's, it's that balance between, you know, you know, an individual who doesn't want to do something and the overall protection of the entire school community. So that is a priority. Where I ask you, students only come to school with essential school supplies. And, you know, as a requirement, we, we do have to have an isolation spot in case students do start to show symptoms. And we are asking that families call in if their child is not healthy. So, you know, the usual screenings that we do probably will be, we're going to look at, they're going to be delayed until we can do them in a safe manner. So that's an ongoing assessment. We're looking at, you know, working in collaboration with the Health Department for the, for the flu, flu season as it comes forward. And again, you know, you get kind of a flu season, COVID season simultaneously. It could be a problem, okay? Then we get a little bit into buildings and grounds. So we have plexiglass desk carousels for grades one to five. We've removed extra furniture to give more space in our classrooms. We've evaluated the air quality in our school buildings. We've added air sanitizer and HEPA filters as advised. We've purchased additional hand sanitizer, hand sanitizing stations. We have a cleaning schedule and disinfectant schedule for each building and have procedures for quote, quote, deep cleaning or disinfection in case there is a positive test or a positive case. Be using restrooms with social distancing, and we will have that marked, there will be signage throughout the building. And then we get into what to do if there is a positive test. And again, I think it's important that, you know, one thing that advantage we have is that our school nurses work with the Norwood Health Department on contract tracing. So that relationship has been established, and that process has been established with them. But they will work together with that. You know, the other thing that people need to be realize, realize is that there might be times when a classroom is closed or a school, but not all schools. So this will vary throughout, throughout, throughout the year. So playgrounds, so right now, there is allowances for playgrounds if, you know, they are cleaned and wiped down. We're not planning on starting with that simply because we really need to get our other health and safety guidelines down, but we'll be reevaluating that after the school year is starting. So staff training, the custodians are well-trained with these disinfection techniques. We've been using them for a while since H1N1. But that we will, we will be training the other staff as well. We've also worked with the Health Department to create a policy for COVID cases in school. And I, you know, I don't necessarily want to go through every single line with this, but there is a difference between a confirmed case, and that's where you've had, you know, the nasal swab test, and it comes back positive, probable. Okay, that's the nasal antigen test or serology antibody. So it's probable, you don't know for sure because it's not actually having the virus right then and there with symptoms. A contact is exposed to a confirmed case or to a probable case that has recent symptoms. And suspect, which is what mostly happens, is that, you know, by a provider's assessment with no laboratory findings or, or a testing that lists COVID as a possible cause. So once a positive case is identified in the school, the Health Department will work with that school's nurse and the principal and the other staff to conduct an investigation, determine if there was exposure, and if there's any close contacts, okay? Schools are notified first of a case, so contact the Health Department. And close contact is turned, determined through an investigation is an individual that has, has had a ten-to-fifteen-minute conversation within six feet of the, of the case, okay? So that could include other students and staff who are within six feet. Does not necessarily mean that someone will come down with it. It just means that you are a close contact, okay? If an individual, go to this line right here. If an individual tests positive for COVID-19, they're required to enter isolation for a minimum of ten days to the date of the test or the diagnosis date until at least twenty-four hours have passed with no fever involvement in symptoms. So this is why the screening is so important, i- is to make sure we're not exposing anyone to anyone who might be contagious. Okay, once a case is identified, as determined by the investigation, which is, and, you know, where it, where it was, it could be the school, it could be the classroom, it could be an office space, will close for forty-eight hours. Cleaning protocols require the clothes, that the facility or the area closes, closes for twenty-four hours, and then the cleaning happens, and then it can start twenty-four hours after the cleaning. And that's, that's along with CDC guidelines. And that two-day period allows Health Department to complete contact tracing and quarantine any contacts. Okay? A suspect case, the individual is waiting for test results, being investigated, the individual shall remain out of school. Contract tracing and quarantine will not begin until a case is confirmed with either test results or multiple, or medical diagnosis. And if we have symptomatic individuals in the schools, someone becomes symptomatic in school, the individual should be isolated in an area and kept there until they can safely be removed. Adults should be asked to leave the school. All symptomatic individuals will be asked to seek medical advice. They do get tested, they should remain out of school until the results reported or the individual is diagnosed, okay? And then we get into A, B, C, and I'm actually just going to kind of, here, there's actually a nice flow chart. See if I can get this come up. And that is from the Health Department, and it kind of goes through the process of if there's a suspected case, and if it's not identified, and what happens from there. So that also is, is, is there, can you see that? Does that come up?
I don't see the flow chart.
Okay, hang on a minute.
Now I do.
Okay, everybody see that? So that, that is in there as well, and we will, we will have that posted in the school's case for this question. But it's a nice, easy way to go through that, that process. So I guess the point is, is that there is, there is a, there is a process that has been worked on with the, the Health Department to, to go through this in a flow chart as well. So let me go back to the other tab. That worked pretty good, huh? That worked well?
Yes.
All right, so then we get into buildings, building cleaning, and this is in, in accordance with the D E S E's guidance on that. And I think I've mentioned several of these before. So we have sanitizer wipes available in all instructional places and school vehicles, hand sanitizer dispensers in every interest and throughout our building, cleaning and disinfection of student tables, desks, including interim cleaning after lunch periods. We will be doing that. Elimination of bubblers, we're going to be using automatic bottle filling functions instead of bubblers, again, reducing the chance of things being conveyed there. High-touch surfaces, light switches, tables, doorknobs, counter High touch surfaces, light switches, tables, doorknobs, countertops, phones, keyboards will all be cleaned and disinfected throughout the day and evening. Each day and evening, our schools will be thoroughly cleaned and disinfected. This include a regular routine of spraying hospital grade and disinfectant in our school buildings. We've actually had that process and have been using that process during foods, flu season for years. Wednesday, you know, as the remote day without students is strategically placed between cohorts to allow, again, that 24, 48 hour period between cleaning and sanitizing and to allow for more cleaning and sanitizing as needed. The district also engages in preventative maintenance with our HVAC system, ensuring that they're in good order and being ahead of any breakages. And we have had a longstanding relationship with our with our contractor. And they have a working knowledge of our systems as well. Currently, we're in the process of finishing an evaluation process of our HVAC systems. So transportation, so we are currently working on reworking bus routes to offer transportation. Again, a key piece of this is people putting in requests for bus transportation. And we did ask the parents consider either walking or transporting themselves, their children rather, instead of using the buses. And basically, the the limitation we have is that we've got 71 passenger buses, and we can only put 32% of 24 students on there at a time. So this means either we have to transport, you know, 64% less students, or we have to have multiple runs. So Connolly Bus is in the process of looking at our bus routes. And again, we are trying to get and I would ask if you are at home and are needing the bus, that, you know, you put your, put your, put your name in. So a couple of things to consider is that we have to comply with the state law and that we're mandated to provide transportation only to kindergarten through grade six for over two miles. And provide mandated transportation and limited optional transportation. We can do that and provide transportation and full operational transportation at additional cost to the district. So these are the three scenarios we're looking at. This one obviously would be the easiest to do because the majority of our students would not be getting transportation. But obviously, that causes inequity thing. So we're looking at all three of these options as we go forward. Just real quick, you know, to talk a little bit about the bus and kind of give you an idea, the monitor is an optional thing. It is not required by the D E S E. We are looking at that depending on our routes and such. You can see the red dots are where where students would be sitting. You know, and, you know, obviously, we're not going to be transporting students if they're ill or showing signs of illness. Everyone has to wear face coverings while in the vehicle. And again, the staggered inboard outboard seating model will be used. There's no food or drink. And the driver's going to wear face coverings. There's hand sanitizer available when they get on and off the vehicle. And obviously, we're not going to have the driver. Again, that's that staff self screening tool will be used with other drivers as well. School meals. We are looking at school meals. There is hope that there is going to be some some additional USDA waivers for universal feeding. But at the high school, we're looking at a grab and go, get on the bus and go home. At our elementary schools, staggering lunches using areas that are near lunchrooms, classrooms that are not going to be used and using desks in our cafeteria as opposed to tables. Because again, you're going to be need more than six feet because you can't eat with a mask on. And we need to have everybody facing the same direction. So and again, assigned seats will be used and all of those sorts of things. So that's kind of how we plan on using school meals. We might have on 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 nice days, kids go outside and spread out and have lunch, depending on the weather and such, or we might have to add more lunch periods. One of the problems at the high school is with, you know, 11,000, 1100, 1000 students. Having the separation in the lunchroom is problematic, which is why the grab and go was suggested. Shout out to community partners, and you can see some of those listed in here. And again, those are all links to to websites if you want to dig down a little bit deeper there. So now we're going to get a little bit into the learning plans for for a for our models. First thing about student attendance, so the D E S E Saturday, Friday evening, put out a revision on one of their data points, which is student attendance. And now we have to readjust our student information system, our SIS system to record in person present, in person absent, remote present and remote absent. And again, really great, we had a lot of lead time on that. So and we're still waiting more guidelines on that. But attendance is going to need to be taken. Students are going to need to go to school whether they are in a in person mode or in a report, remote mode, they will need to attend class, if you will. So Little Mustangs Preschool Academy, and just to remind folks out there, this is you know, one of the major reasons for to run a preschool and to run a preschool with models is to offer special education services to our to our youngest students. And the D E S E has asked that we prioritize this. So Little Mustang Preschool Academy, and again, it's it's partial days at that point, but we'll offer in person. And we'll only shift to a remote option if it's unsafe for all students. We have to check, we have to, the governor closes all schools, something along that line. There is a sample schedule, and so bring that up here. Share that tab. So you can see kind of arrival, free choice. But the key thing about preschool is that, you know, we're looking at maybe a limited number of of models for that, but they again would be coming every day. So it's the priority obviously needs to be meeting our, you know, the needs of our special education students, but we also need to try to get some models in as well. Our model numbers might drop because of the needing for distance in there. So we will, that's the plan. So let me go back to the main one. I'm getting good, I'm getting better at this, by the way. So basically, families of preschools and IEPs have two options, student attends Little Mustang Preschool Academy for full in person programming. If a student with medical conditions or family members with medical conditions that put them at high risk, the parents may choose to have their child receive the IEP services on an individual remote learning plan. That is an option as well, and something to consider for for those. I think I mentioned the tuition paying peers. I don't think we need to go through the Little Mustang remote category. So looking at the rest, our kindergarten through grade 12 and and family choice, this kind of comes up a little bit and is a pre is a lead into our Remote Learning Academy. RLA. So basically, families have will have a choice of enrolling their child in the Remote Learning Academy, which is a 100% remote, do not come in person, or follow in the district wide model, which we are recommending is a hybrid. So those are the, those are the two choices. The reason for the Remote Learning Academy primarily is for students who have some sort of health issue or families have health issues where that is problematic coming into any sort of in person piece, but there might be other reasons as well. So, and, you know, there's a lot of determining factors for a remote learning academy. First is staff availability. The second is how many students are would sign up for a remote learning academy. So our plan is, is that this week, we will ask for families to notify us of their interest in exploring or possibly joining a remote learning academy by the 16th is our proposed date. We will use this information along with our staffing information in planning the program because there's multiple ways that we can do this. One is to perhaps have kids follow along from home with the hybrid model and just not commit on those days. The other is we have Norwood teachers, you know, directly assigned to be remote learning academy teachers. And the third is to use one of the platforms that the state has negotiated for students to sign into either a full boat where they take all their classes through that, or maybe a couple of classes or a combination above. So it's hard to, and I know parents out there want to know what the Remote Learning Academy is going to look like. So in general, we can say that the Remote Learning Academy will be following the state standards. Norwood teachers, Norwood staff would be involved in any way, shape or form, either directly teaching or managing if it's a remote learning remote learning platform, it still has to be managed by one of our teachers right now. So exactly what combination that will look and how that will look at different age levels is really kind of a function of numbers. So because obviously, we have to be cost efficient and and look at our best cost scenario in this. The Remote Learning Academy is a requirement. Talk about unfunded mandates. It is a requirement from the Department of Education. We must offer a remote only option. So we are still exploring that. So the plan is, is that we will ask for people who are interested. That'll give us some initial numbers. We will be codifying and looking at those numbers to make a more detailed plan, communicate that on or about the 19th and ask people who are going to sign up for it to enroll by the 21st of August. So if this is a consideration for you at home, please do not dismiss your phone calls. Please make sure you are getting your emails through through Blackboard and such because that is going to be important. One of the things that we are going to be doing over the next two days is putting out a survey to get that initial, yes, I'm interested in a remote learning environment. Okay, so then you know, we'll talk a little bit about a fully in person learning model, and I've mentioned it before. But I have a link to our first submission to the department on the 31st. But basically, we have older school buildings at the elementary level. We have a high school that was built to be efficient with the MSBA guidelines. Basically, we do not, and and the middle school has got interior rooms that do not meet the the requirements to use with the with with the department's guidance. Basically, we don't have enough space to keep our socially distant. And even at the three foot minimum, especially at the high school, that is a problem unless we are not going to be able to offer their courses. So our technical challenges, capacity challenge around space in our schools. There are capacity checks around buses. You know, it might something, you know, I know people have said I was in such and such a schools that we had, we had dual enrollments and we had a rolling count. Yeah. And that's a little easier when you're one district. But when every district in the state is facing the same challenges, finding extra buses or extra jet or extra drivers is difficult. So because of that, we are not recommending an in person model at this time. Now, should the social distancing requirements change? Should that be? You know, we don't have to be six feet apart. Maybe we still need to wear masks or do this, anything where we can get our students back in and the numbers that we had last February, then trust me, we are all for an in learning model. But at this point, that really is not physically capacity wise an option for normal. A hybrid learning model is K through 12 in person days and remote days. So a hybrid is a mix of in person and and remote instruction. We would allow for the social distancing by having smaller cohorts or smaller in person group instruction. And each building has created a plan to reduce the exposure of COVID-19 to the extent possible. So, you know, it does meet those, and we're going to kind of go through. We talk about a blue and a gold cohort. But basically, a blue group would attend school on Monday and Tuesday, and a gold cohort would attend on Thursday and Friday. Everyone would be remote on Wednesday. That would be a part part day of personalized instruction for students. They still would have work, independent work to do in the afternoon. And in the afternoon or part of the day, the teachers will be working on instruction, aligning instructions, assessment, developing curriculum, redoing groups for intervention, these sorts of things that because of the model and because you're not with your kids every single day, needs a more coordination. We'll get a little more detail on this. I do want to, I do want to point out that the structure of the hybrid day follows a two day in person, three day remote schedule. And they're not, they don't have school two days a week. They have school five days a week. There will be work for them to do. There will be classes for them to attend. So, you know, the amount of instructional time is going to mirror the regular instructional day. You will have, you have teachers interacting, whole group instruction, small group instruction, much like they do in the classroom. They start a class, they have whole group instruction, maybe they have kids working in groups. They meet with the groups, maybe the groups are organized by level for reading level or things along that line. And they go around, they meet with them. We have invested in an enhanced Google product that allows that to happen easily in our Google environment. But you'll see that, you know, children should expect to have the same amount or similar amount of direct contact with instructional staff that they would have during the day. And that is a change from last year. And that is a requirement by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We have a robust remote learning environment that mimics a regular school day. So, you know, our expectations here, academic work is aligned to state standards, district have a plan in place for assessing student work and issuing grades. The road experience will mirror typical student day with regular interactions, check ins and and teaching staff. And that we're regularly communicating with students' parents and guardians about remote learning activities, providing interpretation, translation services, and daily attendance and grades are given. So looking at, you know, this is kind of a general piece, you know, blue cohort, again, in person on Monday, Tuesday, remote Wednesday through Thursday. The gold cohort, remote Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday, and in person on Friday. And that's kind of a general across the district mode. We are trying to ensure that we're consistent throughout the entire district. Again, having, you know, the high school work on one kind of schedule that doesn't line up with the elementary school is difficult for the for families. We are cognizant of that and and trying to work on that. I'm going to do a little editing while we're working through here. All right. So in order to translate, ease transition from hybrid to remote, the district hybrid model is already designed in a manner that can easily transmit transmit from fully remote. So if we had to close a school, close a classroom down, if we had to shut down for a period of time because because our our numbers are are not in line with what is considered safe, we're we're building this so that we can quickly pivot without any downtime between the in person part and just being totally remote. So this was a requirement that I asked the team to look at and consider as we started building this from from the get. So let's get a little more specific and drill down a little bit. So will it kindergarten? Basically, in this, you're going to have half the kindergarten come in. So the whole kindergarten class will come in, they will work with one teacher and and the assistant in the classroom over two rooms for two days. Then they will be remote and that teacher in that aid will be working with the rest of their class. Part of that is there's enough room at the kindergarten to do that without having to add stay, without having to add staff. The other is, is at this age level, having a consistent set of adults is probably probably more beneficial than than we see when they're a little bit later. So let's take a quick look at the sample height. So I don't know, is that seeable from there? If I blow it up, does it show up that way? Is that better?
That's better, Dave.
Right. So you can see, you know, you still have the same routines. You have morning meeting, the phonics, you have all those things you normally have in a school day. Okay, and breaks in there. Okay? And then in the afternoon, specials, math. This is a sample. This isn't every single classroom will be on the same. There is some playtime in there and dismissal. The remote days, again, you're starting with morning meeting. There's a screen break. Okay, again, the research from the spring's activity has shown that young children really cannot go more than 30 minutes and preferably that uh, young children really cannot go uh, more than 30 minutes and preferably about 20 minutes um, with actually being on a screen. You can see how this schedule kind of reflects that research. Specials, special project um, will be put in there as well. There is a lunch break and they will have that uh, remotely. Um, and you can see that there is a release on Wednesday, so the teachers can do that collaboration piece and coordinate. Okay, let me go back to the original one here. This. All right, um. So then we're gonna talk a little bit about the elementary schools. So um, again, two-day in-person, three-day remote model. Um, we are exploring the infrastructure and staffing, I think I mentioned a little bit about the meals, but how do we in different buildings do it a little bit differently? We might have to add lunches, or we might have to add desks, or we might have to use the room that is next to the cafeteria to have some students in it uh, to feed them. Um, on a nice day, we might go outside and sit six feet away from each other um, and and have lunch, but these uh, these sort of things are being developed. But let's look a little bit at uh, the schedule. I will pump this up. And you know, and again, you can see um, you know, you can see this this staggered arrival piece here. And I I want to point out that if we are looking at multiple busrooms, not all the students are gonna show up at the same time. So this morning meeting, you know, um, you know, this SEL time will be a fle- a flexible time that we're doing with different groups during that time. You see, you have a literacy block, morning break, special art or music or whatever it might be at that point, lunch. And again, it's an hour in there, but it might be um, depending on the school, multiple lunches, um, science, social studies, and there's closing me- meetings and work review. Okay, um, and again, as um, one group leaves early and the other group's waiting for their bus, so it'll be that SEL piece in the afternoon. So Wednesday, you can see where the starts a little bit later because we don't have that staggered arrival issue, but they will be met uh, with whole group instruction and a morning welcome. Though the agenda for the day will be reviewed. Um, and breakout groups for academic focus. And again, having the Google, new Google tools will allow that easily to happen. Um, you have a midday break, a lunch and movement break in there. So math might be independent, literacy might be independent, and these are coming out of this academic focus. On this is Wednesday, that half day, right? You can see they're getting instruction in the morning, but they're doing the work on what they've been instructed to in the afternoon. Okay, and then you look at Thursday, Friday, again, you're having your blocks. Okay, and again, they're somewhat shorter than we've seen in a regular class. But uh, they're there, and again, these are all a mixture of whole group instruction and small groups with teachers um, throughout the day. So that is what they would do. And I need people to understand that just because students are remote, there is school happening and teachers working with them on the, on these remote days. Close that out. And there's another one, I'm not gonna go through, you know, the other, the other one's a mirror image, basically. Um, you can see a full remote schedule, I'll just quickly bring that one up here, hang on a second. This is it, this is what would happen um, if we had to be fully remote for a reason. You can see that basically the times changed a little bit. But the basic structure of the day does not change. And again, building a system, building a system that can pivot from one to the other quickly and easily without losing any learning time. Okay, um. So then we get into assessment grade, I think I've mentioned this before, you know, we will still be using Renaissance Star um, to do assessments. Uh, we probably gonna need to look at our report card committee and maybe make some changes um, in that as we move forward. That might be part of the uh, 10 days uh, before um, we open. It's part of our training and alignment for a um, hybrid model. Okay, so then we get into the Coakley. Um, the Coakley decide defines um, a few other terms, a house, which is not a term that we've used before, but house basically is homeroom. That's our home base, if you will, a house, and they'll basically remain in that home, homeroom um, for that homeroom space for most of their instructional day. And again, trying to limit movement and mixing uh, in a school day. Uh, a team, there are nine teams at the middle school, three grade six, three grade seven, three grade eight, approximately 80 to 90 students on a team. A cohort is the division of the students uh, in the hybrid model. Okay, so each will contain 50% of those students that are still are gonna come in the hybrid or the district model and not be in the remote academy. Okay? Um, so a couple of things about the Coakley Middle School, I think I'm, if I'm repeating myself, I'm sorry. But we're not gonna use any uh, interior rooms. We are looking um, at possibly starting with tents and then depending on things progressing, uh, maybe looking at renting some portables for a year. Um, and the teachers, the students are gonna remain as stationary as possible. There are exceptions to this, steam, obviously. PE piece, uh, PE will be and wellness would be um, pieces where they would go to the gym or rotate outside. Um, but again, it's, you know, I mean, we'll get them upstanding and and slight movement breaks with with uh, Go Noodle and things along that line. But the idea is not to have students in the hallway mixing uh, mixing around. Again, mask breaks are gonna be uh, important, moving outside is going to be important. Um, phys ed, usually in middle school is where we start changing for phys ed, that's not going to happen. Um, we will um, go straight from uh, the classroom either outside or one class in the gym, and there will be no change. Um, one thing that we're are gonna see um, change a little bit is instructional chorus uh, selections for uh, students will probably be during the remote part of the um, of the week. Um, and that general music will be the music that is offered instead, it's just not possible to do, there's a lot of uh, limitations around chorus and uh, music playing 10 feet or more. Um, and that becomes problematic, but it is something that you can do remotely. Okay, so then we get into this uh, sample um, CMS hybrid schedule. The middle school will be going to school for the full day. Uh, and you can see that they are meeting all of their periods, they are rotating around. And again, you've got Monday in-person, Tuesday in-person. Again, Wednesday, you know, you're going through the six periods, but it's ending at 11. And you've got, you know, teacher lunch, uh, teacher PD and collaboration. Uh, band instrumental will 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 happen on Wednesday. And then you can see the remote piece again, you still have periods, you still have classes that students will need to join remotely. Okay, and the hundred percent, you know, the hundred percent remote is just basically you don't come into school at the most. Okay, here's uh, the other, other options, again, same sort of uh, of piece. Um, was that the remote model? All right, that's remote, so this is the remote. Again, editing while we're while we're, um, that's the remote model, you can see you have more H, homeroom meeting or Mustang block meetings. Um, will be part of that and checking in with students. Again, the same requirements for assessment, greeting and reporting. So high-needs students, and this actually appear, applies to all schools, so that uh, high-needs students will be assigned to a cohort and attend in-person with their house cohorts in the day. Students in a substantially uh, separate program, uh, autism, developmental delay, uh, those sorts of things would uh, would be within their program. Okay? Uh, and a lot of parents are asking whether their children um, qualify as high-needs, we will be reaching out to you in the near future. Uh, basically, if they're getting their services in an inclusion model, they are probably not necessarily high-needs, they would get their services in the regular classroom. So then we come to the high, the high school. So with the high school, um, it's kind of a modified half-day schedule at the high school. Part of that is lunch. Uh, part of that is trying to get 1,000 students into a school in a uh, in, you know, a short amount of time. Um, and the other, the other piece is is we did not want to limit choices of classes and levels and things along that line by designing. We wanted to try to keep the high school schedule as true to what it is as possible. So with that, uh, the model here is actually um, a modified um, schedule, and again, you've got your blue cohorts and your go co- gold cohorts, I'll just go through one. But you can see on Monday, you start with period one, two, three, four. And then after period four, it's grab and go lunch, get on the buses, go home. There is that departmental meeting, that PD, that coordinating time. And then there are two uh, out uh, online classes in the afternoon. Okay, there's office hours for check-ins and there's online classes. It's the other day, you pick up with six, seven. Uh, and the win block is an intervention block. Um, which is important, so if students are struggling, there is a chance to come back and work with other um, w- with teachers and get help. Um, and that um, also allows students to maybe get started on their projects and and things that they're working on. Grab and go lunch, um, come planning time, period three is an online class, period four is an on- on- online class. Um, you can see period seven, same sort of thing. Uh, you know, on on the Wednesday. And again, it's all grab and go, and there are classes and things that have to be done in the afternoon. Just because they're going home midday does not mean they're done, they gotta go home, get on and participate. And again, attendance is being taken. Grades, A, B, C, D are being recorded and reported. Okay? So then we get to uh, special education. Um, there are requirements, obviously, around special ed. Um, and we've talked a little bit about the high-needs, and that is kind of repeating what I mentioned before. Uh, if your student has inclusion, uh, they'll continue to receive their IEP and Grid B and C services outlined with the individual grids. No students' special education services are being changed. How they come across might sometimes be remote or through um, depending on on the student, then um, that than they were in an in-person model, but there will be a mixture of both. Okay, uh, one thing is is that we are not gonna be going into homes. Uh, and students participating in the Remote Learning Academy that have special education services uh, will be in an instructional services, structured live sessions, video-based sessions, and that would be delivered remotely as well. Okay, so now we get into the Remote Learning Academy again, and I mentioned, you know, again, that family choice going up to page 13 goes through the process. Um, but again, we have to, we have to have some indication of numbers of students and families that will be choosing this option uh, prior to being able to develop or move on to the next steps and mesh the demand for the, for Remote Learning Academy with the staffing for the Remote Learning Academy. Um, and then looking at the options for delivering it. But in all cases, Norwood staff would be involved, be it um, you know, it's happening concurrently with classroom instruction, or it's a separate set of uh, teachers that are uh, doing the Remote Learning Academy from Norwood. Or whether it is a platform that we are using, it still needs to be coordinated and overseen by uh, Norwood staff. So hopefully, and and that information will be uh, coming out once we have those numbers, we'll be asking for those later on this week. So uh, one thing that's not necessarily in here that I want to um, make clear to people, there is a difference between Remote Learning Academy and homeschooling. Homeschooling is a process where uh, the family, the parent provides the instruction and curriculum, and there's a process to follow that can be found on the district website. Remote Learning Academy, we are still providing the instruction, the assessment, the grades, the transcripts. Homeschooling, the family is doing that. There's a pretty long section here on uh, supporting uh, remote learning. And I'm just gonna go through uh, a couple of things, I'm not gonna read the whole thing to you here, but this is a incredible work by our technology department and obviously led by our incredible tech director, Joe Kidd. But we made um, a concerted effort this spring maximizing um, grant money and other things to make sure that we were in a position um, to have uh, Chromebooks for uh, one through 12 for this year. Um, we are gonna need some cooperation and coordination because we need to um, bring some in for servicing and get them back out and get some coordination, so please um, listen to those swap requests. Um, so we can make sure that everything is up and running for when we uh, when we get, get to start. Um, but this was again, looking at last spring, knowing that there was going to be a push or a a, um, you know, a a rush to get Chromebooks. There are several districts who did not do what we did and are currently not looking at getting uh, the needed technology probably until till December. Um, because of good planning and forethought, we are not there, but we will have that. Um, we are also um, looking at increasing the number of iPads for our kindergarteners who might need those. Um, and the other thing that we did early on and will continue to do is that um, we sought out families who are having uh, difficulty or did not have reliable home internet service and worked with the town. Uh, Norwood Light and Broadband to provide that to them. Um, you know, we've also um, provided mobile hotspots in certain cases if uh, Norwood broadband couldn't get in there. Or with Comcast, which is the other cable uh, provider to get them low-cost internet. Our our priority was to make sure that people had access, so they had access to learning. Uh, that was a tremendous amount of work uh, and well-done by this technology staff. So we've also invested, not only, but you know, we've, we have also through um, different sources, we have, you know, worked on our infrastructure this year. We have um, you know, brought in uh, to replace older laptops for our teachers. Um, and you know, we're also looking at um, looked at remote learning software and systems. So again, so we're using Google Classroom, Google Drive, but we did purchase the enhanced Google options along that, so that we have uh, different things. There's also another portfolio-type assessment and collection called Seesaw, which is for our younger students, we purchased that. Um, we have uh, the online math, the ELA curri- curriculum is part of our purchasing last year. Um, and you know, so we you know, will be doing that, Joe talks about, you know, tennis-taking, hand-raising, background blur, polling, digital whiteboard. So these are all things we're gonna need to train our teachers with at the beginning of the school year before we really roll this out. And you can see right there, there is a Norwood Pools uh, School Remote Learning website that goes through all of these um, piece by piece. Uh, I think I mentioned the n- network infrastructure needs. Um, we're still gonna use Aspen, I mentioned a little bit earlier about the uh, about the attendance piece and having to get that uh, up to date. Um, and that can also be used uh, to email, Blackboard Connect. And one thing that um, has come up, if you, if you opt out of an outreach message, be it a phone call and you choose that opt-out for email, you're opting out for anything and everything else. So please don't opt-out. Um, because I don't think it's necessarily appropriate to send it as an urgent message. So you get it four times on your cell phone, home phone and everything else. So um, these are outreach things, so if you've selected to opt-out of those, that's probably why you're not um, getting an email. Um, all this information is posted on the website, Facebook and Twitter. Um, and goes out through all of those. We did also purchase uh, Survey Monkey this past um, spring to collect. Um, the advantage of that is you can get more uh, information and you can really break it down a lot better. So that is how we will look at getting some of this other information that we're gonna need to do the next step on our planning. Um, teacher support, I did talk uh, a little bit, I think previously about um, the training that was provided last spring, we're gonna continue that and enhance that this, this um, you know, th- this fall as well. Um, and I think that is teacher PD, I think we covered that. All right, so social-emotional learning and student mental health, one of the main reasons for um, for bringing in uh, having students come to school is concerns over many things, but also social-emotional learning and mental health. Uh, being in isolation um, is is problematic for young students. And again, the best learning happens, it's a, it's a personal, interactive um, piece. So we have, you can see that in all of these schedules, we've put time in the schedule, be it morning meeting, be it Mustang block, uh, be it the will period at the high school to to address these things. Um, the win, the what I need block, um, so so we've identified this as support block for social, emotional, academic and enrichment time for students, all of the above. Um, and as you know, we uh, revamped Open Circle last fall. And it's our primary social, emotional learning curriculum at the elementary school. Um, unfortunately, the the um, Um, unfortunately, the the um, the secondary programs are a little lagging. Uh, but we will invest uh with those as well. And of course, obviously, having a full complement of school adjustment councils um is is a huge boost as well. Um, oops, sorry. Okay. Um, athletic sex curricular activities before, after-school programming. So, just, you know, we're still waiting. The the MIAA has pushed off sports or sports decision until the middle of September. At the earliest, they are still looking at that. We are still looking for guidance from the state and federal level on that. I could pontificate on whether, I I don't know whether we will see every sport back, maybe some are are more um accessible with the health and safety considerations than others. Obviously, you know, marching band is going to be a little difficult with the ten-foot um, you know, the ten-foot um distance piece. But if anyone can figure out distancing, it's probably a marching band, right? But you know, the one thing that uh also here, we talked a little bit about before and after-school um program, and I want to restate again um that we're evaluating options for extended-day program. So, you know, it is, everything here is a balance for what, how we've previously met family needs. How we've previously been able to do that and built systems to do that, and now trying to make sure we're keeping cohorts together, social distancing and uh and safety um in there a- as well. Um, with the social distancing that impacts, much like we can't everybody come back to school, it's going to impact our ability to do the programming. Um, we need to look at other options. Um, right now, the uh initial plan is to have extended day kind of stay at the um, at the elementary schools. But again, cleaning needs to happen daily, and we only have so many custodians. So we might need to shorten that day a little bit to give an extra hour or so to, you know, to do the cleaning or figure that out. So tho- those are the next steps uh in extended day. Um, we are committed to offering an extended-day program. Whether we're able to offer uh as many openings, uh as long a day or as, or the off days remains to be seen. We need to assess the uh, you know, the savage site for larger numbers um for off days as well as staffing. There's a whole lot of things that go into this. So um, stool faculty and staff rights and responsibilities. So basically, you know, we're gonna continue to work with the Norwood Teachers Association, develop training for the fall. That's what those uh ten days prior to school opening. Um, and again, the priority is to maintain the health and safety of our students and employees during this situation. Um, we're gonna have mandatory training around the safety protocols, uh training around how we're going to organize and run our school. Um, and then obviously, everyone needs to be involved with compliance with all of the aspects that they're going to be trained with. Uh, and then we uh close the document with kind of a collection of all of the uh, all of the sites that we um have, or the major uh links that we have um put in here, including Impact Norwood. Uh, we probably will add a few others. I do wanna talk a little bit about the Parabola uh project, just real quick. Um, so we were uh invited to join the Parabola with a project, which is um, it is a philanthropic um, opportunity. Uh, it is um funded by, no, it's funded by the One Eight uh population uh foundation and looking at um working with Aradine Labs and the Learning Accelerator. And you can kind of see, there's a whole list of criteria, let me get down a little bit, on things to consider when reopening. And this kind of is a working model. We've gone through this, and this will be a major um cornerstone of our planning going forward. Something, there's seventy-seven pages of this, by the way. But uh the principles are uh leadership and culture, risk stratification and prevention, testing and tracing, screening and PI, space layout and the air quality, cohorting and scheduling, masks and PPE, hygiene, density and distance is the nine principles. And each of these principles has subparts that, and recommendations that we have uh have been going through and will go through again to make sure we have the best, safest plan um going forward. So I just wanted to bring that up. We were one of three or four districts in um, Master just asked to partner in this project. Other districts have been able to pick up um with our and other districts' feedback in this. Um, but I just want to point out that we're not operating completely in a vacuum. But you can see with seventy-seven pages, there's a lot to go through. We've gone through it, but we need to go back to the next level of our uh planning. For there. All right, so at this point, I am open to uh suggestions from the committee and either answering questions. I do have um, you know, the administrative team here. Um, so they can um go through that. So the, you know, the long-term plan is obviously, we're gonna um, we have to submit this plan. This is what the committee adopts. Um, it is a working document. We will come back and have to change and probably add more details to it going forward. There are a lot of things uh as I mentioned, we still need to work out, staffing, busing, financing. Uh, but those uh are difficult until we have um an actual plan to go forward, to plan. Multiple plans is just not within uh the the capacity that um, that, you know, we have and the time we have. So if the committee would like me to go back to a section, I can do that, or I can stop presenting the document, or um, I'm at your pleasure and how you'd like to like to proceed.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Um, I I think maybe keep it open for right now because I imagine we might wanna reference a couple of things. Um, I just first wanna say thank you to you and Dr. Wyeth and the entire administrative team. Um, you know, we only last met five days ago. And a tremendous amount of work I know went into the document um that you shared with us tonight. I know that work happened over the weekend. I know that work happened pretty much right up until we met today. So I wanna acknowledge and thank all of you for your hard work. Um, I also just wanna remind the community of something before we start to start our discussion tonight. Um, you know, as a school committee, we don't have the opportunity as a committee to discuss and deliberate and ask um outside of a public meeting. And sometimes we ask questions um because we just don't know the answers, or we're trying to think it through, or we're trying to collaborate. Um, and I think that we have a very strong committee right now um that works very well together. Um, and we have some heated debates sometimes, but that is good because we are all working to figuring this out as best as we can. Um, but I would just ask the community to remember that, you know, don't, don't judge us too hard sometimes with some of the questions we ask or the statements we make because this is not, you know, pre-rehearsed, this is live. This is us collaborating as a team, and the collaboration is really, really important. Um, and then the third thing I just wanna say, because this is an overwhelming task and amount of information before us tonight, um is to maybe just provide it a little bit of a framework of what I believe we need to accomplish and also how this is connected to some other things on our agenda. Um, so we clearly need to vote on the plan. That is very important. That is, you know, number one, I think, what has to come out of our discussion tonight. Um, part of the um plan approval is also the school calendar uh which is on our agenda. So we need to vote and discuss on the school calendar. Um, there is, under new business on our agenda, two um a um positions requested that go along with this plan that we wanna discuss and possibly vote on tonight. There is a brand-new policy on the agenda that is very much connected to reopening our schools and this work. And then not specifically on the agenda, but I think embedded in this plan, um, I think we need to talk a little bit more about the Remote Learning Academy and some of the policy and procedure around um families committing to that and notification dates. So that is just a high level of things I think we need to accomplish um specifically related to reopening. There are other things on our agenda tonight as well. Um, but do you think that's a fair assessment and framework, Dr. Thompson, of what we need to do next?
Uh, yeah, it sounds a little more than I was hoping, but yes, yeah.
Sorry, but not sorry. Um, but but with that, um, Dave, Joan, Maya's thoughts, questions for the administrative team? Where would you like to start our discussion on the reopening plan?
With a vaccine. That's where I would like to start our discussion, the reopening plan is with a vaccine.
Where do you want to start the discussion that we have control over, Joan? Dave Catania, did I cut you off? I'm sorry.
No, no, not at all. Um, so, you know, I read through the plan, listened to everything. It's it's an awesome plan, you know, but it's 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 just what we're putting together. It's it's it's, it's a lot of scheduling, it's a lot of information. It's it's really, really good. Just, I I don't think there's any plan that will stand up to this virus, unfortunately. You know, so I'm really having some major concerns, and as best we can, I don't think we're gonna be able to prevent an outbreak. You know, I don't think that kids are gonna have symptoms and we're gonna be able to screen them. You know, I think that it's just gonna happen, that people are gonna get sick and be sick in our schools, and it's just um, there's so much unknown. I I don't know how to feel. You know, I I, it's uh, I don't have good questions that you have answers for, you know? That's where I am right now.
Thank you, Dave. Uh, Maya?
Um, if nobody, if we don't have questions about the plan right now, can we stop sharing? Because it's just easier to see one another more if we
Yep.
aren't sharing the screen.
Yep.
Um, but I I think, I hear Dave Catania's concerns. I I hear the concerns of of many members of the community. But I also think that if we don't have, if we don't consider the hybrid model our main model, our our expectation, then if we don't decide that now, we are deciding now that we will be remote in entirety for, through the entire year. Because I think, you know, we think that there's some staffing considerations. We 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 know that there's some staffing considerations. We know that there's um, uh, it's like, you know, there there's scheduling that has to happen. We want students to be assigned to teachers, and we should be doing that with the, with the hybrid model in in, you know, in mind. Um, even if, you know, we'll be, even if we commit to hybrid, if we say today that hybrid is our plan, that doesn't mean that if something awful happens in the next month, because we still have more than a month before school would start. If something happens in the next month and Sagal Reese changes her guidance on and her recommendation to return to school or Doc or Charlie Baker changes his mind or something like that. So um, you know, even if that, if that that happens, we can switch to remote. But only, but if we ever wanna go back to hybrid, I think we have to start with the trying to do hybrid. Um, I just don't think that it's, there's any way that we, you know, even if like a vaccine were to come out, become available in January, if it becomes available in January, by the time people um, you know, it'd be time it's distributed to everybody and then there's the the waiting period before it fully takes effect. Like, we're still gonna need to have the social distancing throughout the entire school year, is my expectation. If there's a treatment that comes out, which would be wonderful, I think we're still gonna wanna maintain the social distancing. So we would still need the hybrid model for that. So that's, I think we should go forward with considering the hybrid model our main model.
Thank you, Ma- uh, Maya. I think, uh, Joan, you had some comments you wanted to share.
I do. Um, Maya, I disagree with that premise that if we start remote, we're committed to remote because there are other systems that we've seen that are committed to starting remote for a month and then going hybrid and phasing it in.
That's not exactly what I meant.
Okay, can you clarify?
Is like, we could just, I'm saying like, if we want to, if we think at some point we may want to go remote, I mean, go hybrid, then I think, I'm sorry, I keep doing this. If if we want to go hybrid at some point, a month from now, two months from now, or starting September sixteenth, I think we need to consider the the hybrid model as our main model.
Okay.
And like, have all that structure all planned, ready to go. And then we can have the flexibility to choose the district-wide model of being either remote or hybrid.
I have, uh, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. I have one other question. Um, in the last presentation, we saw staffing positions of teachers, and this one, we see two tech coaches. Uh, what is the, that that's an eighteen-person swing um in the space of five days. I commend your your uh administrative team for doing that, but I'm wondering uh what you think the estimate would act, will actually be.
Yeah, I I, well, and again, this is the, this is the challenge. Um, you know, it it's hard to know that until we finish, you know, finding out where students are going to be, find out where staff are going to be, finish our our MOU and impact bargaining with with the union. All of those things uh impact that. But the estimate of twenty has not, is not changing um right now, but it might change. Um, you know, I mean, I I am not coming forward with asking for positions or things along that line at this point in time because we don't know that yet. But that is something, you're absolutely right. That is something that um we will come back to the committee with. And if I could just follow up on on uh Maya's uh comment, trust me, it would be a heck of a lot easier to just say, we're going remote. But if we only go remote, which is fine, it'll make the rest of my summer a lot easier and everybody else who's on with me a lot easier. It would take months to pivot from a remote-only start to a hybrid start. You, we will not be able, we would have to reassign all the students. We would have to, um, the bus routes are still the bus routes. Um, we would have to, we would have to design bus routes. We'd have to do all of that piece to bring it up to speed to be able to do it. So in reality, this is the most difficult, and I think my colleagues will probably tell you, it's probably the most difficult work they they've done in their in in their entire educational career, trying to redesign school from the bottom up with very little direction, no funding, in less than three months. So.
But we, but we could engage in parallel planning. I think we're talking past each other. So if you set, if you set a, if you start remote and set a date of, say, Aug- October first to go to a hybrid, you could engage in parallel planning. And mostly, the the reason that I'm talking about doing that would be because there are so many unknowns in this um that we would essentially just be, in essence, moving the in-person start date back and keeping the the remote start date. Would be, that's the option that I would be.
Right.
I guess I'm wondering why we can't consider that option. That's the option I'd be willing to consider.
Well, we can, but that's, that's, that's the, that's the second and third layer of questioning. Um, you know, the first, the first layer is what is, what is our starting model? Where are we coming from? So we might have to stagger how we bring the in-person as we get closer to that through the process. But, you know, or or we might start remote and then stagger that piece in. But if we're not saying our preferred model or where we wanna start or what we wanna do is hybrid, then that would be a different start.
There, 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 I I disagree. There are two conversations going on here now. One is, are we voting on what we're opening, what we would prefer to open in on September sixteenth, seventeenth, eighteenth, whatever that date is? Or what is our preferred model? Those two things are actually separate. One is, when or what model are we gonna start with? And one is, what model would would we prefer to be engaged in for as long as possible? And I'm getting confused between the two. Sorry.
Yeah, and I I I'm sorry. So my view is, you are voting on your preferred model. I will come back to you with how we are going to specifically get to that preferred model. Hopefully, the sixteenth, but, you know, again, uh, you know, as I've said from from the beginning, there is not an extra million dollars hanging around right now to hire staff. So, or to do bus routes, or to do what have you. But if if we don't start planning from a particular point in time, we're delaying any progress. So that's kind of my.
Yeah, uh, Maya?
So I I think that, I mean, I do agree with Joan that those are two separate questions. And I think I was trying to argue that I think our first conversation should be is, what is our preferred model? Because if we decide tonight that our preferred model is remote, then there's no other decisions to be made. We're we're kind of done, right? So let's first start with, is our preferred model hybrid? And I'm advocating that I am in favor of the hybrid as our preferred model because otherwise, because I'm not willing to give up on the idea of having some. because otherwise, because I'm not willing to give up on the idea of having some in-person instruction this year.
Dr. Thompson, um, forgive me because I'm gonna ask you something I asked you earlier when we talked one-on-one. But I'm, but I'm just very much a process timeline person, which I know does not work in a pandemic. I know that. But, okay, so we have to vote on something tonight. Let's just say for the the sake of moving the rest of my questions along, that we do vote that our preferred model is a hybrid model.
Yep.
Then, based on the plan that you submitted to us tonight, page fifteen under family choice, there are some dates of how you and your team would then go about figuring out who in our town is saying, yes, we're gonna do your district model, or no, I need to be signed up for the Remote Learning Academy, the RLA. And what is in the plan as of now is that we would ask for a commitment to enrollment to the RLA by August twenty first. So we meet again as a school committee as of now on August twenty sixth. And I'm really hoping we're not adding more meetings in between now and then. So let's just say we're meeting next on August twenty sixth. If we vote tonight that our preferred model is a hybrid, you and your team work on a lot of things in between now and the twenty sixth. You could come back to us on the twenty sixth with a much clearer picture of how many kids are in the hybrid, how many kids are in the RLA. That would then influence transportation, food service, um, if we need additional staffing. And then I am assuming, understanding from this process, that then on the twenty sixth would be the implementation of the hybrid model. And then maybe at that point, you and your team are telling us if it is a staggered approach to the hybrid model, if we need to start remote, et cetera. Am I understanding this timeline correctly?
Yes, um, I'm nervous. I'm not gonna have all the answers on the twenty sixth, but we would have definitely have more answers on the twenty sixth. Um, yes. I'm thinking that beginning September meeting might be the staggered starting sort of thing if we need that. You know, and 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 I've said it before, and and I'll say it again, I'm concerned with too long of a stagger as we get into the late fall and the flu season. And you know, and you know, not to be beating my own drum, but I closed the Norwood schools days before the governor closed the schools in the state because of talking to our Board of Health and getting very uncomfortable with what we were seeing. And again, part of that was not knowing as much as we know now. But, um, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to get, allow us to get into a position where where we're doing this. My my concern with waiting until, you know, November first or some other arbitrary date. Um, and I know we're not setting that, we're just throwing things out. But my concern with that is we might lose an opportunity until later in the spring again. Um, and again, the importance of that face-to-face with social emotional, the importance of uh, building relationships, building routines. I think I've said before, the the advantage we had when we were thrown into the fire of of remote learning when everything closed was that we already had kids using the technology, the brand new technology, the override provided, especially at the elementary level. We already had routines and relationships. So that could happen. If 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 we lose our opportunity to build those, at least in some aspect, I mean, I'm just nervous about that. It does not mean, and I want to be very clear, I am not willing to to not have our safety protocols well rehearsed, people comfortable with what we're doing, looking at, because we're talking about totally new systems with drop-off and pickup and everything else and being cautious, conservative, and thoughtful about how we do that. Um, so I'll quiet down.
I think that Joan has a question or comment.
Whoop, muted.
Uh, Joan, you're muted still.
Did you do that on purpose? Um, just, I want to go back to the positions and I I hear what you were saying that you do not know exactly. Um, I understand that. Are we still ballparking somewhere in the one point five to two million dollar range to do a hybrid version? Or is there any kind of wiggle room in? I guess the questions I'm really getting at is are all, they're all financial. I'm just gonna put it out there right now. So one of the things that we were considering, um, you know, prior was, are we hiring the, are we hiring people on to the town and then we become responsible for unemployment? And benefits like that, are these people contracted? Like, so I'm primarily concerned with the financial. And I'll I'll tell you why. Because if we commit to going hybrid as the preferred model and your team continues to bust themselves like they've been doing, and we know that financially we cannot do it, we've wasted a whole bunch of time and burnt out our administrators even more because I'm just gonna remind the public for just one second and get in the soapbox. It trying to parallel plan is incredibly hard and our administration has been doing it for two years because they were did it, they did it all through the override and now they're doing it right now. So that's the reason why I'm kind of focused on the financials is if we can't afford this as a town, I I want people to stop burning themselves out.
Yeah, well, and trust me, personally, it'd be easier just to say remote. But, you know, I, knowing this team and how much they're child-centered, I I I know that they realize the, um, realize the value in that. Even if we can't actualize it, even if we have it on the shelves, that puts us in a better position. We might have to have some down days to do it, but i- at least if we prep for it and we can't actualize it, we're still closer than than it would be if we if we don't. So I'm still, and and I know you and I go back and forth on this, I'm still hopeful that, um, somewhere along the line, someone is going to to get it, that, um, the schools really can't do this and the states really cannot help the schools do this unless the federal government does put things to be done. So.
Oh, my my addenda, I wrote my addenda this week and it's specifically on that topic. So
Okay.
we're on the same page on that.
Yeah.
Joan, were you looking over my shoulder and copying my addendum?
Yes, yes, I was.
So, um, Dave, so I I can't, you know, of course, we want, you know, our our students, you know, with their teachers learning, you know, really, you know, face-to-face, the relationships, everything. I mean, it's incredibly important. Just, you know, as as we say at my job sometimes, you know, we're we're not ready yet. You know, we don't have the equipment, we don't have the testing, we don't have the funding. You know, so can you build a plan and have it ready to go? But, I mean, how are other districts doing it where they're saying we're gonna start with remote learning and then when it's time, we'll go hybrid? Because I mean, the way I was feeling before this meeting was that we're voting on a hybrid plan, saying that's a preferred plan and hey, come September seventeenth, we're all doing the hybrid plan. No, no, I I I could not feel comfortable with that right now. You know, and and I don't know when we can come up with that. I mean, there's there's not even PPE beating ship to us, you know, it's like, it's it's kind of, it's it's unbelievable, you know, so um, if if I if I if I wanted to say something, I would say that it'd be like, yes, of course, a hybrid slash any type of in-person learning is incredibly important, preferred. But at this time, i- it's 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 not preferred because we can't do it safely? Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, uh, you know, and again, you know, we, you know, and again, we started last spring. We or we have on hand three months of prefer, of of PPE, I can't even say it anymore. We have, we have on hand three months stockpiled. So we are, we are prepared to have people do face-to-face. And the plan is, when we use up September, we buy for December. So, um, that that is, that is the plan. We're not gonna buy, you know, ten months worth of PPE because what if we're not needing it for ten months? But that that is the plan going forward. Um, you know, and and we'll see how it goes. But it's but there there is a lot that can change in the next three weeks.
And, Dave, so sorry to interrupt you. When I say PPE, I mean, like, yes, hand sanitizer, gloves, masks are great, but I mean, we should have an N ninety-five mask for every student. You know, a cotton bandana is not gonna work. A gator is not gonna work. It's just not enough. You know, so it might be great if our teachers are protected with masks we provide them with. But what about all the students that are hanging out with each other? It's just not, you know, we should, when I say enough PPE, I mean enough PPE for every student and employee of the system.
We do, we we do have enough PPE. We have, we have what is, what is required for three months. We're asking people to bring their own masks. And again, there is not, it is not a one, it is a layered approach. So the first layer is being different, distant, and different as the case may be. The first is being distant. The second is having a mask on. The third is the hand washing and sanitizing. The fourth is 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 the cleaning and and disinfecting. So all of those layers together offer the protection. It's not one thing. And this is, this is the thing. So we're talking right now of about a confirmed case amount of about two percent of those who are being tested. So there has to be a reason to be tested. And then out of those being tested, ninety-eight percent are negative. The numbers are lower than what the national recommendation is for opening schools. And I know there's been pictures going around of hallways in Georgia, and that's what I think, we are not doing that. Um, you know, we are thinking about patterns, we're thinking about numbers, we're thinking about even dismissing different, uh, numbers of classrooms at different times. At the middle school, we're not having a move-in hallways. We're considering all those things to add those layers to it. If that number changes when when it is not safe, this is why we're building a model so that we can move to remote, ensure the safety of our staff and students without having to stop and rethink it and recalibrate. So and is it, I mean, trust me, I would have loved to have had a budget, all the guidelines, uh, know what staffing levels I needed and be able to describe all of these programs back the beginning of May. It would have made all of our lives, including yours, a lot easier. But we just got, we just got the the platform stuff Wednesday afternoon. I haven't even had the time to even even draw up my sleeves and look at it. So, you know, um, it's, it it's maddening, it's frustr- frustrating, it's fluid. But the question is, what is the preferred mo- mo- model and where where is this team starting tomorrow?
So that happened last week, I like, uh, Dr. Wyatt had said something that, you know, we asked that question, what is the preferred model? You know, if we were not in a pandemic and we were just answering that question educationally, we we all know it's fully in person. But we know for all the reasons that you have been identifying and we have discussed as a committee, that just can't happen. So what I have been struggling with like every second of every day and night for quite some time now, is just my own two professional identities. One in public health and one in child development. Because in this situation, something that make really sound safe science-based decisions in public health don't always correlate nicely with the child development aspect of our students and vice versa. Um, because we know, I mean, we know as a society and town in our state and our country that there are students who really truly do need to be in school physically for a number of reasons. Um, and and we do know that, you know, fortunately, slash unfortunately, depending how we're looking at it, that school does meet many societal needs of children and families. Not that they should, not that schools should be responsible for everything that they are, but we know there's huge needs met. And I I think that for some students, if we just say our preferred model is remote only, we're doing an injustice to those students. Whereas if we're saying a hybrid with the option for the Remote Learning Academy, then we can give families some choice. Now, there's some inequity in this. Some families may want the RLA and not be able to do it. So I do want to acknowledge just a lot of layers of inequity in any of these decisions. So I'm trying to think all this through from our students. And then you add in the layer of our staff. And then due to this pandemic, again, the only reason we're discussing any of this and the science of COVID, the question of adults versus the questions of students becomes very different when you're looking at it from the science of COVID. And I don't know how you reconcile that. But then take out the public health, take out the child development and focus on our education. How can we best deliver education through this? Add in the financial hurdle. Right? So like, I just, I just need people to understand this is a vortex of no good decisions. And like, I am a person who professionally, I like, focus and thrive on offering my clients like integrative solutions. And I am having a really hard time integrating all of this into one good solution because I can make a case right now to go hybrid. I can make a case right now to go full remote. I can't make the case in order, given the safety ramifications and the pandemic, to go fully person. But Joan, I think you were waiting to speak.
But you just gave me a nice segue to be like, well, we've decided one thing. I'm gonna focus. Um, Dr. Thompson, I was wondering if you could address the issue of, I know that you've been doing surveys of parents and staff. Um, I'm wondering if you could address the issue, and I recognize I'm putting you on the spot here and I apologize for that. But I'm wondering how many of our teachers are likely going to be opting out? Um, so just so everyone's aware, there's the COVID Cares Act, which I did not know about, which allows you to take federal leave um, from your employer for up to ten weeks. That is an option for our teachers. It's also an option for all of you, I believe, unless you're an essential worker. I don't know. Look it up if you're interested. Um, but we also have a number of staff who are, I would assume, were microcosm of society high risk. Um, and so I'm wondering how many, how how many staff do you anticipate or what percentage of the staff do you anticipate will be choosing to opt out, leaving us in a position to find long-term subs in a hybrid model?
Uh, I don't know if I have an exact number of that. There is, you know, there are those that have American with Disabilities Act level disabilities or or health issues that we have to accommodate. Um, you know, if someone is nervous, that is not necessarily an accommodation, um, that needs to be given. So and and I'd have to go back. We have, we have not, I have not asked a question recently. We asked it early on when the models came out. Um, however, getting that information is another factor that we need to look at with how exactly we start going forward. But and again, the the problem is, until the committee says this is our preferred model, this is where we're gonna try to go. And unless, and the other piece of it is, um, you know, people making decisions without that COVID checklist and without those precautions being, uh, in there. So you know, and so that is, so it's a hard question to to answer, but I would, depending on on the on the level, we're probably talking about twenty people that would fall under the ADA piece. Um, I can, you know, there's, there's a whole nother piece about childcare and that sort of thing that we need to sort through. Um, I don't know how many would fall under that aspect of it. There was some discussion about teachers becoming essential workers to avoid that situation. Um, and that's another number we kind of need. Um, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have a, you know, a hard.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if we knew what percentage of our of our staff had self-identified as falling into the high-risk COVID categories.
Yeah, it's, right now, I want to say about fifteen. Have we, we've asked people to reach out, but that that doesn't mean that everybody has reached out yet.
Right, agreed. Recognizing it's a ballpark.
Yeah.
I mean, I know, Joan, this doesn't answer the specific question you're asking about staff who fall under the the ADA category. Um, but we do have the most recent data from Jody Smith, you know, in her public forum email that the poll she just did of the union. I know it's a different question of the.
No, no, when did that come in?
Uh, I read it during, it was during, yes, it was one of nine that I read. So if you didn't remember this detail, that's probably okay. Um, but what she said in her email, um, is that with three hundred and sixty-one responses of staff over the weekend, the most recent union poll, um, sixty-eight point seven percent felt that returning remotely would be the safest and thirty-one point three percent felt that the hybrid would be the way to go. That is Ms. Smith's, um, language in the the letter to public forum. Um, Dr. Thompson, how, so three hundred and sixty responses, how many? Did you know how many there could have been? What was the the number of staff that were surveyed? Uh, Dave, you're muted.
I have some technical issues. There there's four hundred and s- four hundred and tw- four hundred and twenty teachers. 420 teachers. It's 480 entire staff members in the district. So full-time staff.
Quick enough to tell me what that percentage is.
Margot, Margot just reached out, uh, to me saying that, um, yeah, 425, basically. But basically, you know, the survey we did, um, said about 15%, but again, that was back early on. And, and part of the decision, part of, part of these decisions, both staff, parents, you know, depend on having an actual model and information about the model of how it's going to be implemented. So.
So that's about the 85% rate of our, of our teachers. But what was the 15% that you just mentioned, Dave, in the?
Can you un, unblock there? Staff, but Margot did, Margot was in charge of the staff, uh, and schedules subgroup.
Uh, yeah. So we did a staff survey, I want to say around mid-July, and at that point it was somewhere in the neighborhood. I, I want to say 15.7%. I can try and bring up the survey results.
15.7 seems pretty precise.
So I'm a math, former math teacher and you can take me out of a math classroom. You really can't take the math out of me. Yeah. And I think we had 400, we had somewhere around 420 respondents. Now that was full staff. So that was not just teaching staff. That included secretaries, custodians, like anyone could take that survey.
And Dr. Fraser gives 15.7. Who said exactly what?
They said that they were not, they would not be able to return. Um, and that was a medically documented reason. Um, and then our, you give me a second, I can probably pull up the actual survey and say, cause then we asked the second question that was, do you have somebody in your family or basically a, a reason outside of it being, um, a medically documented reason. And that percentage was close to, was all, was only like five or six percent.
Thank you. That was helpful. Thank you.
Does anybody know, this might be a question for HR. You, you can, you can have a medical condition. I'm just clarifying. I think you can have medical condition. It doesn't follow under the ADA necessarily. Like a lot of people who struggle with autoimmunity, fibromyalgia, different types of arthritis, things like that. Sometimes it's not very easy to get that ADA form. Am I, am I correct in that? Does anybody know?
Yeah, that's, that's something we would call Molly, uh, Molly Curran at the town, town hall to ask, but.
Those, those numbers answered my question, which was essentially, did we have an indication that if we chose hybrid, that we would be staffing our schools in the hybrid model with non, basically with a large percentage of non-Norwood teachers? That was what my question was really about. If, if something like 50% had indicated that they weren't coming back, then I would be like, oh, okay. Like what are we going to do for the year? What's the point of going hybrid if we're just, you know, if, if they're not our teachers, basically. That, that was what my question was.
Yeah. And that, and that is one of the factors we have to get hard numbers on.
Maya. So I just wanted to go back to Joan's point about budget. You know, I, we are looking at, you know, the initial estimate showed that a hybrid model would cost us probably about a million dollars more than an all-remote model. Meaning a model where we're just remote from now through June, like, you know, we're not trying to, to, um, to be in person at all. Although actually I guess that isn't really an option. The high-needs population has to come in person regardless, but, but for the, the general population of our students. So, you know, I do know that that's a lot of money, obviously. But I also know that there may be weirdly some areas in which we save money this year. You know, there may be like, um, the MA, now this is small stuff, but like the MASC has canceled the conference. So the money that we had set aside for a couple of school committee members to go to that conference, that's not happening. But I, and obviously that's not going to get us even one teacher. But, um, I just think like there's other places where, you know, we're not going to pay for anybody to travel this year. We are not, um, we may not be paying for any athletics this year. We already didn't pay for a summer musical this year. You know, I think there are places where there may be some savings and so, um, I think it's worth pursuing to, and, and I also think that, you know, the administration did a great job of trying to get it to start to flesh out a plan of what this hybrid would look like and the staffing of it would look like. But that's really, really hard when you don't know how many students are actually planning to come. And so I think that once you actually have some numbers to work with in terms of how many students would like to come in a hybrid model, then, um, then you can start to look at, are there any other ways that we can, we can gain some efficiencies that? Or if we find that there's a lot of people who, um, are looking to go remote, does that change some of the needs that we had assumed we would have, you know? So I think it's something that, that we could look at and consider. I had asked specifically that the technology support people that we had talked about at the last meeting be part of tonight's meeting because I think regardless of whether we do hybrid or whether we do remote, we are going to need more technology support. And so, um, I think that's something we should discuss as sort of a separate thing than the, the hybrid versus remote discussion.
Thank you, Maya. Joan.
Maya, where are you getting approximately a million dollars? Can you like, what's the rationale? Cause my, my back of the envelope calculations are not quite the same.
So I had, um, 11.8 teachers at $55,000 each. 7.4 paraprofessionals at $24,000 each. And then two technology coaches. My, I don't really know what you guys were thinking about in terms of salary for this. My back of the envelope number was $75,000 each.
What about the portables?
I did not put the portables in.
There were 11.
We also need to look and see how many students, I mean, if we're looking at 20% of our students are going to choose the remote learning academy, we may find that that may change the, the, the staffing, the, the space needs at the middle school.
I think the problem, I agreed, but until we know more about the remote learning academy, I believe there are a number of people who are on the fence about whether or not to send their kids to either to school or to the remote learning academy because the calculus of the risk changes for them. Depending on how a number of factors in the remote learning academy. Um, so.
The, your calculus of risk in terms of health?
I think for some, I think just risk in general is the risk of going to an in-person worth it. If, you know what I mean? If, if the alternative is my kid is going to get, you know, a, a day of YouTube videos emailed to them in the morning and that's the remote learning academy, then it's that. It's kind of a quality calculation and a risk calculation.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Yes.
Uh, Dr. Thompson, August 16th in the, in the plan tonight, that is when you are sending out more information on the RLA.
I'm sending out a survey with how many are interested, but we will have some more information in the RLA. Yeah. Yeah.
Cause I know this has been a big thing that we have seen in our emails, not necessarily the ones I read in public forum, but we've been getting a ton of emails as a school committee throughout the last week, but I've been trying to keep up and answering. I think I have five more. I have to catch up. So anybody watching, if you wrote us yet and I didn't write back, I will, I will do so tonight. But a major, a major theme in the emails that we're getting just to read, um, is around wanting more details on the remote learning academy. And I think, you know, that's, that's the, one of the points that Joan is making, um, when people are weighing the risk and benefits.
Right. Well, and again, you know, ultimately with, with, with that, with those folks that cannot do in-person, perhaps there's basically, they perhaps at certain grade levels could be a remote-only teacher. Like in, in the elementary school, you've got teams of three teaching, two in people to teach or one remote teacher. Maybe not, uh, the best solution, but might be a possible solution. Another one is that those folks, again, you have to make reasonable accommodations. Those folks are staffing the remote learning academy. So again, it's an, it's a numbers piece. So if we're already going to have these people and we can assign them to do that as opposed to doing in-person and meet the, uh, American with Disabilities Act, uh, requirements, then that's, you know, a savings and a reasonable accommodation. So, you know, the other piece that, you know, so there is a platform that is being, no, that was negotiated through the state. It's still going to have to be managed by us, still going to have to have somebody taking a teacher or whomever taking attendance and doing the grading piece. It's the content that will come through that. And all of those are based on the state standards. Uh, edgenuity is one of the, uh, one of the options. And that is, you know, a company that we currently use for credit recovery. So we're familiar with that. So these, but again, there are some pieces right now that are being discussed behind the scenes because districts were kind of surprised that it was not an end-all, you know, whole package deal when we, uh, received the information. It's like, look, look what we negotiated for you. Spend your money. We thought it was not going to be our money on, on that. So in some cases, depending on the need and depending on the availability of staff, it could be, you know, we offer certain classes through that at a particular cost. To have a child completely enrolled is 1,300 for a half year. So that's 2,600 a year. That's pretty pricey. You know, I would rather repurpose, uh, or reassign or have our own staff, uh, do that work, but it's also problematic if we need a physics teacher. Um, and we don't have a physics teacher or the ability to have a physics teacher, uh, assigned. It might, you know, there's, there's other ways to look at doing this. We just have not had a chance to do that work yet. There's, there's far too much work to do and too, too little information coming out too late to have everything figured out. So it's kind of, it, everything at this point is, is a numbers piece. We need to have real numbers to do the next level of real planning. So we have options out there, but the actual numbers and what it will, and the financial analysis of what it will cost are.
Yeah, Joan.
Give me a great educationally compelling reason for why it's better to go back in person than it is to do remote learning. Tell me, I, 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 I want to separate, did I break up?
No.
No, I just wanted to clarify. You mean in-person in a hybrid model?
I mean in-person in a hybrid model because we have already decided that we are not doing, that we cannot do in-person. I, I just, what is the educationally compelling reason for why students need to go back?
Building relationships, setting routines, having, uh, interactions. Well, you know, the whole engagement piece, it's a lot easier to be disengaged if you don't actually have to go meet with somebody. So th- there's an engagement factor there. There's routines, there's relationships. And you all know this, education is based on relationships first. If you don't have built that relationship, it's very hard to convey the learning in an effective, efficient way. Without the opportunity, you know, to do that, you know, is difficult, you know, relying solely on technology for a first, second, third grader, kindergartner is extremely difficult. We might have to go there for part of the year, but it, it's not preferred. I mean, obviously the preferred is to be back where we were in, in November last year, having joyous, colorful classrooms, everybody coming in, you know, getting ready for the holidays and wearing, you know, turkey, uh, you know, headbands. I mean, you know, so, I mean, trust me. And when you look at those classrooms, we're not going to be completely there just because of the distancing piece. I think probably under the circumstances, two days is enough, but that engagement piece, the relationship piece, routines, helping kids and showing them things. Alec, you want to chime in on that?
Yeah, no, I, I think you covered it. I, it's, it's really, it, it, it's, it's more educationally sound and beneficial for kids because they're, they have direct personal-to-person contact with their teacher. And yes, it's not five days a week, but it's two days a week, plus a lot of, um, follow-up individually with, by the teachers, you know, with, you know, um, Google meets and, uh, tools like that. So it's just, it's more direct contact with the kids. And that, that has a huge social emotional benefit to it. And a huge education, I think the learning is more effective in that model, quite frankly. You know, you're going to get more learning out of the kids with a hybrid model than you would with a full remote model. That's the bottom line.
Right. You know, and, and there's a whole bunch of, there's a whole bunch of setup that goes on with the opening of school and organizing everything from here's your books. And I mean, I mean, we're going to have to have parades of cars to get, to get materials out, out to families. There's no relationship there. So the one thing that was very evident last spring, getting towards May, June, is that those relationships, because they were not consistently reinforced. And I heard it from parents and I heard it from teachers. Kids backing off from, because they were overwhelmed, you know, and we're, we're looking to fix that in two ways. One, some sort of interaction personally and checking in with kids and a more robust online matching our school day i- in a remote session. So hopefully those two things are going to solve those two big issues.
Dr. Thompson, a question that, um, came up tonight in one of the emails and public forum, but we have also seen in their emails and dialogue and community, going back hybrid as a preferred model, even if we're able to start it again, is contingent on the health and safety standards of the virus. Um, and there is a very real possibility that sooner rather than later, there's an exposure in the school and we're quarantining. And we have very clear protocols thanks to Segal Reese and, you know, thank goodness we have her. And then we have all this guidance. Um, but I know we're also waiting to get the, the metric, the, um, metric from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Right.
There have been discussion, I'm sure there has, um, but this is open. Dr. Thompson, Dr. Wyatt, any of the, the principles around like that constant start and stop and transition and how hard that can be for kids and the, and the staff and how that might, and I don't know, I don't have the answer here, but how that might negate some of what we're thinking is the, the positive nature of being in school partially?
Yeah, it's, it's going to be some in-person is better than no in-person. You know, is basically, you know, the, the, the thoughts around this. And supposedly this metric around safety and, and closing schools is coming out. It probably would have been helpful if that came out, uh, a month ago. But there are supposed to be guidelines around when schools should consider clo- closing in their community based on metrics. I'm not even going to pretend to know what all the metrics are at this point in time, uh, but that information is supposed to be coming out. So it's not, and, and this is, you know, I, I don't know how to convince people of this who, who, who don't know me, but you know, we, we are going to follow those. And if we have to step back, then we will step back. Those, those protocols we put together with, with Segal for, you know, going through the process was so that we understood, everybody understands what the protocols are, if there is a suspected case or a positive case or what have you, and how we're going to handle it. You know, the Wednesday midday, and I know the Wednesday midweek piece, the focus of that was to give an extra day in between the cohorts, again, layers of mitigation. So, you know, it would be nice if I had those and I could point to those right now, but again, uh, hurry up and wait. So, but, you know, we, we will have to go back and forth, hopefully fewer than many. But if there are many, then that's an indication that it probably is time to move out of the hybrid model into the remote model. So, you know, and a lot of those, and a lot of those partial closure pieces might only be for two days while a test is coming back and, and the investigation is starting. Uh, and it might be thrown out again, 98% of those that are test, being tested, not everybody, those that are being tested are coming back negative. So it is being overly cautious if we are quarantining and closing. It is not because.
Dave, what's on you?
So I'm just trying to visualize, you know, you've got kids in school, socially distant, teachers that can't get close to them to wipe their nose or look at their work. You know, we're, we're talking about like this magical thing that just being in proximity to kids, it's going to make everything better. And it's not. There are barriers to learning that are physically there. Secondly, I'm worried about their actual fear that they're going to have because, you know, we put our kids through this terrible like active shooter drill. Now we're going to have them going to school with the warning that, hey, you could get sick, you could. You could get sick, you could get people sick, wear your mask, it's dangerous, okay? Let's say there is a class that has to be shut down or a time to be shut down. You want those kids traumatized by like having to think about, am I gonna be sick? You know, it's, it's, it's really, I'm just imagining beyond like. At their individual level, what's gonna happen to these poor kids? You know, is that, is that long-term trauma that they're gonna experience worth what we're talking about here? Like, you know, we're, we're talking about things that are very important, but. The pandemic is putting everything on hold. We have to think about better ways to do this. That keeps everybody safe, doesn't traumatize them. And gets as much as we can in their growth and development. So, you know, we're talking about things in theory, but. You know. We're talking about rational, it can't be rational with little kids. You know, and, and God forbid a teacher gets sick and something happens, they're gonna carry that guilt with them for the rest of their lives.
Yeah, and just to be, can I just, you know, just to be, you know, classroom shutdown, it's not, you know, they, they would go remote. Education would still happen with that group, just to be clear. So.
Maya?
I, we haven't said this out loud, but I feel like a lot of our conversation has been about younger students. And um, and their needs, you know, and, and like the teachers who can't, y- you know. Tie shoes and stuff like that. And I, I understand that that's a real issue, but I also think that. The needs of our high school students are real. And um, our high school students, I mean, the, the emails that I've been getting from high school parents. Um, a lot of them are concerned about their students missing out on educational opportunities. You know, I, I've heard people say, you know, when, when people say that they're worried about their third grader getting behind. Then people say, well, what are they getting behind? Everybody, all the third graders are, are home, you know, not. Doing regular school this year. But um, when you're talking about high school juniors and seniors, you know. For some of them, this is their last year or two. Before they are done with their formal education. They don't have time to catch up after this. When we look at, a- and you know, I'm, I'm hearing from parents saying. In another year or two, my child will be competing for college admission against kids who went to private school who are in school. Um, and not that I'm saying that we need to be in school full time, but I'm just saying, like, let's remember that the, the needs of the high school students are quite. Different. Um, I think, you know, a lot of people talk about wanting to get kids back to school for childcare reasons. But I think it's interesting that in our survey of families. The highest percentage of families who want their students to be, who are not, who want their students to do the hybrid model. Is actually at the high school level. It's not about childcare. It's about. Getting an opportunity to be with their peers at some level. I understand it'll be different. I understand it'll be socially distanced. But I think they can be in a classroom, they can be engaging in conversation, they can be watching their teacher, they can be doing chemistry labs. They can be doing physics labs, they can actually be there. And, you know, those students are the students who, you know, sometimes people say, oh, well. The, you know, the elementary kids are less likely to get the disease. And, and I don't know, you know, I know that, I accept that the science is still evolving on this, but. Um. General consensus seems to be that high school students are similar to adults in their ability to get and transmit the disease. But I think that even with that, more than eighty percent of high school parents told us in the survey, they want their kids in school for. At least part of the, of the week. And I think part of it is that we need to remember that. We're not choosing between. Students being at home, safe in a bubble and students being in school, exposed to lots of people. You know, if you were choosing, making those two choices, then clearly, you know, them being in school is adding a lot of risk. But honestly, I see a lot of high school students who are out mingling with their peers. I see students who are working at restaurants. And they are serving people who are not wearing masks. You, you know, the students are servers, so they're wearing masks, but they're. Approaching people who are not wearing masks and they have to get within six feet. I think a lot of families have decided that. They're willing to accept some level of risk for their high school students. And, and I think they would especially be willing to accept some level of risk in order to get some in-person education. Now, I, that doesn't mean that we have to go in that direction, and I think there's a lot of other issues to consider in terms of the finances and the staff and things like that. But I think there's, you know, when, when that one parent said that when their child went to extended day, they noticed a significant increase. In or improvement in that child's. Whole attitude. I think that that's real, especially for our high school students.
Yeah, thank you, Maya. Um, John, I know you wanna ask, you guys have a quick follow-up question for Dr. Thompson. Um. And not that I need this data tonight to make a decision um right now, but. I thi- I think we've missed a, a stakeholder group here of survey and we haven't surveyed our students. And. Not that I want more surveys out of everybody to dive through, but you know, just thinking back to, um, you know, different situation, but just thinking back to our school start time task force. We did survey those students. And um, on that task force, we had a really good discussion around how. What parents may have perceived and reported on behalf of their student wasn't always the self-assessment or the self-report of the student. And I don't know if administrators have any just like anecdotal response to this, but I'm. Really wondering now as we're talking. How are students feeling about coming back or not? Does anybody have any? Insight?
Anybody wanna pick that up?
If you wanna ask my kids, they're basically already packed in there, so.
I mean, do, have we, are they just through conversations with, with students? Um, I know we might have a little bit more insight at the middle and high school level, but even maybe. At the elementary level, I mean, what are we hearing? What are our adjustment counselors hearing?
Anybody, anyone wanna pick that up? You, Margot, Cindy? Okay, well, you can unmute and put, and you can.
Yeah, I'm not sure if everyone can see the comments, so.
Um, the chat box throws me off. Let me see. Um, do you have it open, Joan? You wanna read whatever they put in the chat box?
Um, I'd actually just like to invite um, anyone who has submitted something to the chat box to say it out loud, loud if they would prefer.
Yeah.
I'm not in an ideal spot, but I'll, I'll just say, I see kids outside playing at the schools every day when I go in and they seem like they wanna be there. Um, they ask we want me when they're coming back and things like that. Um, they come to the school, they go on our playgrounds, they play around. Um, so, but those are just the kids I see.
Thank you, Dan. Uh, Joe Ken?
Yeah, I actually spoke to one of the uh, I believe it's the incoming sophomore class president the other day. Um, he came up to me and asked me, you know, what's. What do you think's gonna happen, you know, that kind of si- situation? And. Being the sophomore class president, I said he needs to, I, I, I suggested that he email you. Uh, the school committee and Dr. Thompson on uh, asking about the student perspective of things. And then I asked him what the student perspective of things were, and he said he didn't know, so I said, well. Before you email them or as you email them, start to look for the student perspective on things and. Get yourself involved in the conversation. So you should be receiving an email from. Uh. A very involved tenth grader coming up soon.
Well, thank you. I had no idea that conversation happened, just to put that out there. This wasn't like a. A planet question. Um, can everybody still see me? For some reason, it shows that there's like a thumbnail in front of my face now. I don't know what I accidentally hit. But you can still see me? Yes, okay. Yeah, um, but any other feedback from anybody in the meeting around our students?
No, I'm hearing none.
This is Donna Callahan. Parents that I've spoken to. Um, have shared how their children feel, so I think that's part of how they responded. And I know one parent in particular said her first grader was not comfortable wearing a mask all day, so she's considering. Going totally remote for her first grader, but her fourth grader is adamant about wanting to come to school. So the parents that. Have been emailing me have been requesting, um, you know, we're, we're. Forming together to be, you know, can, can our kids be together for a cohort because we're gonna, on the other days, we're gonna. Form childcare, so it seems like they are having conversations with their students, but I mean, I don't know if that's a hundred percent.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, Donna. Um, I think that no matter how we come back, there is um. Mental health and social emotional needs of our students. So I wonder, not to task everybody with more work, but I wonder if before our August twenty sixth meeting. Um, there'd be a way to survey students directly um and get some feedback because I think their feedback is gonna influence the type of support we offer. In any type of model this coming year. But that's just my personal thought. Yeah, Joan?
Um, so I have, I, I'm gonna ask one more question of Dr. Thompson. Um. Uh, assuming that the school committee, assuming that we go remote, nope, assuming that we go hybrid. Um, sorry, um. I'm assuming that school committee will, and the administration will be using the metrics. That you referenced, which some of those have, have started coming in from mask. They've put together a kind of a, a, a. A set of guidelines. It just got emailed to us, I think, today. Um, yeah, it's in one of, I'll forward it if you, it's in one of like the. List survey digest things.
Oh.
Um. Uh, so, okay, so assuming that we're kind of those, this, that's being recalibrated every two, every two weeks. Let's say a, a parent chooses to go. Chooses to put their kids in the hybrid model. And then um, something occurs which makes that parent reassess the risk. Would they be able to move their child to remote? A remote version immediately? So what I'm thinking specifically, like, I'm gonna, let me give a case study since I'm talking abstractly. Um, all right, let's say we've got, let's say we've got a, you've got a student in the class. They've gone back for hybrid, um, and there is a case of COVID detected in the school, but not in their class. That level of risk is, um, we, we as a school system would be closing down a school, would be forcing a school to go remote. Not, oh my god, we can't have these long meetings anymore. Let me try again. You've got a student in a class. They're in the hybrid model, they're in person, right? For, uh, that's, let's say that there is a case that is presented in a different grade in an elementary school, right? So this, there's no cross-contamination. Um, the school committee and the school department, uh, the school board feels like the best thing to do is to have that particular class go remote. Would, wha- what if the family in that other class, the first class, the third grade class? No longer feels comfortable. With COVID. How easy is it for them to then switch out of a hybrid into a more remote type of learning? And that's my last question, I promise. You don't have an answer, I know. It's a very technical and detailed question, but.
Right, it's a very technical process. Right now, what we're asking people to do is to sign up for one or the other for a term. Um, or a semester. Um, but that's based on a lot of assumptions at this point in time. So. Space i- i- is an option. Is it easy to move between one, one or the other? I would, I would think that it would probably be more difficult to move from. From the Remote Learning Academy into a physical classroom than to move the other way. But I don't know. The other piece is enrollment, where if we're buying seats. Having someone jump in there mid-year or leave mid-year could leave the district hanging with uh costs that. Um, we are incurring and then not using. Um. So those two things, so I mean, I would say space is the biggest thing, but we're, we're starting out with, you're signing up for. Is we have elementary schools that are on trimesters, we have um, high school and middle school that are on terms and half years. Um. And so again, how does that all fit together? So that's, so if there's, we are, if there is a medical reason. For it, if someone has, you know, been diagnosed with something that is medical, then obviously we would make that change immediately, but.
I'm thinking. Sorry, I'm thinking specifically about like truancy laws and stuff like that. If I, as a parent, called in and said, hey, the risk is too high. I'm keeping my kid home for the next two weeks, we'll do remote learning. That would be something that the school system would be relative, I, I know we're talking general ballpark, but like.
Right.
Not gonna be start pursuing people for truancy, cause I know that Dusty wants us taking attendance and blah, blah, blah.
Right, well, they have to show up in those, in those meets and classrooms, so.
Yeah, okay.
Can't be true, but. But yeah, so that's, so that, that's one of the, that's one of the many conundrums to de- command- commanderize.
But we should remember that if a parent decided to keep their child home for two weeks and they're in the hybrid model. They're only missing four days of school, uh, right? Because they could still participate in the remote side of the hybrid learning. So they're not gonna have to miss ten straight days of school. They would miss two.
Right.
And two.
Agreed. I'm asking if there are any other consequences to keeping your kid, like, to keeping your kid home. I wasn't actually specifically asking about moving into remote learning. It was more like. Can you stay home in the hybrid model and not be penalized, basically? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be, it would, I mean, you could, um, I'm not quite sure we, I mean, the learning plan will be pushed out. For that, but the in-person instruction wouldn't necessarily happen, so that, I mean. You could, I mean, ju- just like if you're homesick from school.
Exactly, that's really the question I'm asking.
Right, so, I mean, you know, obviously work and send homework, you know, home and, you know, a lot of our uh platforms now have. Video instructional pieces to them and depending on, on, on the parent, maybe we can help them out or. You know, maybe that's a small group we make up with on, on, on the Wednesdays, half days when we're, when we're doing some things, but. Theoretically, yes. Switching, switching modes. You know, we need to kind of set some sort of limit, limit to that, cause again, there's a very well could be capacity issues on one side or the other.
So I think um. Obviously complicated situation, great dialogue, but I think we're gonna start to go around again and. There's still a lot on our agenda, so. Anybody before somebody makes a motion, um, does anybody have questions on anything that was presented tonight? Because we did have more detail around like the floors and um, what, you know, the hybrid models look like at each level. Did anybody need anything clarified? Before you can, before you feel you can make a vote? Any questions for our administrative team? Joan?
No, not for the administrative team, sorry.
Oh, or anybody.
Oh, okay. Um, we're voting on hybrid or remote pending financial information. That would be what somebody is gonna make a motion around. Is that true?
I don't know, somebody has to make a motion.
I would like to make a motion that we vote on. This is, that happened last time when I didn't use the right words, right? I thought I made a motion. Um, I make the motion that we move to vote on whether or not we are hybrid or remote pending financial information. And conversations with town and uh, financial officers.
So.
Maya, you looked like, I, I did well until the very end and then you were like, yeah, pen, all right, so just pending financial information.
I think you should make a motion to go one way or the other and we voted up or down. I don't think we.
I'm not, okay, someone else is gonna have to make that motion.
All right, I will make, I, I move that um, the school committee. Endorse the hybrid model as our preferred model. Um, pending further conversations about um. About district resources. Joan, does that get to the parts that you were looking about, looking for?
Yes.
Okay, Maya, so you said to school committee to endorse the hybrid model as our prefer- preferred model pending district resources.
Yes.
Yes, is there a second on that motion?
If I can offer an amendment to that motion?
Uh, are we supposed to vote on it, like, have a second first and then an amendment? Somebody help me with the.
I'll, I'll second it for the purposes of discussion.
Okay, thank you, Joan. Okay, now Dave.
So I'd like to offer an amendment that it's uh, those resources to be discussed should include. Testing for students and PPE for students.
Can you clarify what you are, that we provide testing for students?
Yeah, you know, I really, you know, as I, as I look at universities, they're requiring students to be tested once per week. You know, is that feasible right now? Absolutely not. Should it be something we go for as a hybrid model to test our students more frequently? Yes, I think it should be, so that should be part of the conversation. You know, I, I don't feel comfortable uh, if we just send our students to school without any testing involved.
Are you suggesting that we are requiring families um. Get their child tested and provide a result, or you require, you suggesting that the school district should be requiring it?
It's something we should consider.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Dave, so if you, if you looked at the plan in terms of what the nurses put together and the health department, that. That's not enough for you, is that what I'm hearing? You want an actual physical COVID test as opposed to taking the temperature and monitoring other symptoms and. You know, doing what's in the plan.
Correct, cause the preliminary research says that these kids are asymptomatic.
So I can say that we discussed this a little bit with Segal about testing. She does not have access to tests. I believe at this time, we as a public school system don't have access to tests. I believe Dusty was talking about something one day. I don't know when they're gonna put this out, but that they were looking into a way to have testing available, but I believe, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that was. I believe that was more if there was a reason to test, if there was an exposure or symptoms.
Right, the only, the only people that are doing routine testing, like you're talking about, are, are sports teams that have far more resources than public schools. So it's, I mean, so the state is talking about if there's a questionable situation, being able to quickly get test results and responses quickly, but it's if there's a reason to test. There is nobody out there that's, you know, and maybe, you know, universities are, have got other resources or means or a medical lab in their, on their campus. I'm not quite sure, but.
So. Go ahead, Joan, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I was gonna say, a lot of the universities that are requiring it have their own testing facilities.
Yeah.
And they're testing partly because they're bringing students in from other places and they have students who are living together.
Oh, we're not sending, I wanna send, I can't send them for sleepover. This isn't hybrid sleepover camp. Hybrid sleepover camp, please. Sorry, I just, this is a very, I, this is just very tense and.
It's a hard stuff. So, um, Dave did put an amendment for it. Is there a second on that amendment? Okay, so I do think the amendment failed, but going back to Maya's motion, which Joan seconded is to have the school committee endorse the hybrid model as a preferred model pending district resources. Any further discussion on that motion? Are you all in favor of that motion? Okay, opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so three to one, that motion does carry. Um, so, Dr. Thompson, does that give you the guidance that you need at this time?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
So just clarify for me, the communication that will go out to families and staff based on that vote that we just took, is it that we are reopening with the hybrid model with the huge caveat that over the next couple of weeks, as we learn more about all of our resources, that could change, right?
We are continuing to move to a reopening of a hybrid model and that those details will be evolving as this entire ball of wonderfulness just keeps evolving, so.
And I just wanna be clear for community staff, students, everybody, that one of the important next steps before the twenty-sixth is to continue our negotiations with the union around the MOU with the reopening. So this, this vote, um, does not disrespect or discount that process. That process is in motion and that process will continue.
Right, yep.
And that we will have financial considerations at our next meeting, that this is not a definitive, we are opening.
No, and just so the committee knows, um, Maya and, um, Ms. Sheridan and Dr. Thompson and I were already talking about trying to schedule a budget subcommittee meeting, because we obviously recognize that is needed right now. Um, just due to how busy everybody is, that budget subcommittee meeting probably won't happen until the twenty-fifth, but as soon as we have that meeting, um, we will get materials out to the rest of the committee before our meeting on the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, and, you know, like I said from the beginning, there are no good decisions here and it's all square pegs and round holes. There's, there's nothing easy about this at all, on, on any aspect, you know, so. Gonna enter my thirty-first year in education and it's definitely been, uh, the hardest. So, thank you for, for listening and your support, uh, through this, so let, um.
So next something is the school calendar. Do we, do we wanna go there, Dr. Thompson?
Sure, yeah, so I, so we, um, we sent that out, I don't know. You can just pull, I don't know if people can just pull that up. So this is still in the works, but the reality is, is that we do need to kind of give families an idea as to when, um, when school, in whatever fashion it is, would, would start. Um, we are, um, so there, there were ten days that were negotiated at a state level with the commissioner and the, uh, heads of, uh, the various teacher unions. Uh, those ten days were to, um, offer time to get the training, look at the protocols, look at the logistics, make sure everybody's on the same page. Um, we obviously would like, like to use that time for, uh, training in some of our new, uh, tools and technology. Um, looking at professional development, we, uh, we do have our new ELA, uh, program. Um, we had scheduled a convocation in the PD day, uh, the thirty-first and first of September, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Dr. Wyatt. Um, we're looking at keeping the, um, ELA PD day, probably moving it a little bit later. Uh, and splitting the convocation day up into little parts throughout those, uh, ten days. And part of that is, we, we can't have everybody show up in an auditorium to begin with, so, you know, is that, uh, the best way to start? I think it is, um, we should come together at least in some sort of group fashion, uh, at some point during those ten days. But the traditional stop, start to school needs to change. So if we take the ten days, which the commissioner has said we have to use at the beginning of the, um, beginning of the year, we leverage convocation day to maybe some other point in time during the year. Should we need it to make some other major shift, we can do another PD day around that. Um, we'll have to look at that going forward, but that would put us at eleven days, because we do need to get, um, the English language arts training off the ta- off, um, and started. So that would, uh, put us for a student's start day of Thursday, the seventeenth of September. And again, this, what, what you have there is just a working draft. We did not have it all, um, completely codified at this point in time, but I think for families, the important thing that they need to know, uh, and even for extended day program or the rec department or any of those, is what day, uh, the first day of in-student learning would happen, so. So my, my recommendation is that we adopt a revised calendar that has the seventeenth of September as our first day of student learning. Teachers would still report on the thirty-first, would not change their calendar. Um, does not change the overall calendar, because we are allowed to reduce to a hundred and seventy days. Uh, and we would s- put that other convocation day in at some other point. We'll talk about that as we get maybe into October or something along that line. Uh, might give us an opportunity to maybe do some other interesting things, uh, the, and things that we wanted to do, uh, try to do this year, we'll see. Uh, or maybe there's gonna be a need to, to shift or to spend some time learning, um, in some other way, but we'll deal with that as it comes, so.
Dr. Thompson, can I clarify if with this, the September seventeenth, that means if you are the Thursday, Friday cohort, Thursday is your first day physically in school, but Thursday could also be your physical day, remote learning, if you're the Monday, Tuesday cohort, correct?
Correct, so we have not, again, have not figured that all out. Uh, we have not discussed that at all, but one thing I would think might be a good idea, depending on how we start, and again, I'm getting way the heck ahead of myself, but maybe one group comes in on Thursday and the other group comes in person on Friday just to get a start. But again, we have a lot of work to do to figure out how we start in a safe and thoughtful way.
Joan?
Um, I, I would like to know why we are not doing that split start on that Wednesday. It appears from the draft that that is day eleven versus day ten.
Because we're gonna use one PD day for the ELA PD.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I saw that earlier in the.
Well, it's in there, it's in there as part of that timeframe.
So we're starting with eleven days of PD, if I, if I'm understanding that correctly?
Right.
Even though it says ten, okay.
Right.
Does this impact, are we voting on a school year as well or just the start date right now? Sorry, me with my pesky, what are we voting on?
Voting on, we're voting on incorporating the hundred and seventy-day school year as negotiated with a start date of nine seventeen, Thursday.
I am, I'm in favor of splitting those two things, actually. Um, I don't have a problem negotiating the start date on the seventeenth, but it is within our purview as to whether or not it's a hundred and seventy-day or a hundred and eighty-day calendar year. Despite what the commissioner has said to relax the standards, we can always exceed the standards.
Yes, but that would be, um, extending the school year.
Contractually for teachers.
Mm-hmm, contractually for teachers.
Which are, we're currently in negotiations around an MOU about, correct?
Yep, yep.
So I would like to split the motions. I would like to split those two issues.
Right, I didn't, I don't make motions.
Okay, I'd like to split the two issues.
Okay.
Do I need to make a motion for that? I would like to make a motion to split the conversation between the start date and the length of the school year.
Okay, is there a, a second on that?
Happy to second that.
Okay, discussion? Okay, proceeding with the conversation by splitting them into two discussions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so Joan, do you wanna continue with the motion, uh, motions? Do you wanna pick which one we start with?
I think the, the seventeenth is the, is the one that, uh, the school opening gate is the one that we should discuss. And I would actually like to propose putting off the length of the calendar year until, um, the next meeting, when there has been opportunities to negotiate around an MOU.
Okay, so you're making an official motion that we start school with four students on September seventeenth?
Nope, I was just making the motion that we have that discussion.
Well, let's, I'll make the motion that we start school on, on Thursday, September seventeenth. And that doesn't mean we can't have discussion once we've made the motion, but.
Yeah, okay, is there a second?
Okay, I'll second, yeah, I'll second that.
Now, discussion, I'm starting school for students on September seventeenth. No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, four zero. Anything further on this topic? Are we tabling the rest as Joan proposed?
I'm all for tabling.
Okay, so at this time, what the community needs to know is that we have voted to continue moving forward with our hybrid model. We will continue these discussions in August twenty-sixth about, um, resources and, and, um, in executive session, uh, negotiation updates. Um, we have voted tonight to have the official students start on Thursday, September seventeenth. Um, if it's okay with the committee, I think just to kind of keep this conversation going with reopening, let's move ahead to the two new positions, because it's tied into the plan that we saw. Um, Dr. Thompson, or I don't know if Joe's still on, does somebody wanna talk to us a little bit more about the tech positions that we saw, uh, needed in the plan?
Joe, you wanna, you wanna talk about why you suggested, uh, those two positions?
Uh, sure, so, um, just, uh, basically, um, unlike a lot of other school districts, we do not have any educational technology coaches, uh, employed by the district, uh, par- partially because, uh, we have such a great group of administrators, um, principals who are um, champions of technology and have been since the, the moment I've, uh, started with the district. Um, we have Jill Milton, who's our elementary math specialist, who does a ton of, um, technology integration along with math, and now Stephanie West as well. Um, and we have some great instructional technology facilitators at each of our schools that do an absolute amazing job with tech integration with their staff, um, especially when we started remote, um, in the spring. Um, but, uh, realistically, the, the technology, instructional technology facilitators at each building get paid a stipend that amounts to about an hour and a half, maybe, or to two hours a week of, uh, support to those teachers and, um, they went, well, excuse me, up, uh, up, up and beyond during, during this last spring. And, uh, since we're talking more like mirroring the school day, uh, remotely, uh, when we're talking about hybrid or remote, doesn't matter which model we're talking about, we're still talking about two-thirds of our students at, at the, at the least being remote. Um, and we're talking about that being five hours a day versus the two hours a day, maybe, it was during the spring. We're talking about a lot more support that's needed for our teachers. Um, so, we're looking at trying to get, um, a couple of positions, whether that's, uh, they're new positions or they're reallocated, depending on what staffing looks like, based on who's coming back and who's not, or, um, to, to help, uh, coach our teachers, one at an elementary level, uh, one position at a secondary level, um, at the least. Uh, again, much like, uh, Jill Milton and Stephanie West in our elementary, uh, positions, um, but really focused on all subject areas, helping to integrate and create a ro- remote learning experience and support that remote learning experience for teachers and for families as well.
Thank you, Joe. Um, do you have, um, I'm sorry if I missed this, a budget associated with what those positions?
I do not, I, uh, I just kind of threw it out there and, uh, here we are, so, I, I, I don't. But I can, I can put one together, absolutely, one of them, you know.
Okay.
Maya wasn't far off with that, with that number that she, she put out there. Um, I mean, again, it depends on what we envision the positions to be. Uh, are they, you know, are they, are they contract, I would assume they're contracted positions, we don't necessarily, um, because we only, there's, they might only be one year or, or, um, so, you know, we can talk about, um, uh, salary and, and what we'd look at for budget, definitely, put that together.
Okay. Questions at this time for Joe or Dr. Thompson? Joan?
So Joe, this would mean, approving these positions would mean we'd have a much more consistent, um, platform use across the classroom, so that we wouldn't have one elementary school teacher using these platforms and one elementary school teacher using these platforms. Is that the goal of these positions?
Yeah, you know, that's a good point that I should have brought up. That's a huge, a huge goal of the position, right? It's, it's that consistency across, uh, the schools and across the district on, you know, really focusing on these platforms. You know, focusing on using Seesaw K to two, focusing on using, you know, Google Classroom three to twelve and, and so on and so forth with the different platforms that we're purchasing and, and, and having that be, uh, having those people be, uh, leaders of, uh, professional development and training i- in areas that they can, and, uh, again, providing that, uh, very similar experience, um, so that there's sort of a baseline, and I remember the last, last school committee meeting, you talked a lot about baselines. So there's a baseline of usage for these certain, um, and expectations for, for these, uh, platforms that we're, uh, purchasing and going to be using throughout the year.
Other questions for Joe at this time? Is there a motion in regards to these two positions?
I motion to approve the two positions.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Um, anything else that is needed from us before those positions are posted? Or you, you will just continue to keep us updated at our next meeting, Dr. Thompson and Joe?
Yeah, I'll talk to Dr. Thompson and Dr. Wyatt tomorrow about specific, uh, specifics about posting and job descriptions and go full force from, from there.
Okay, wonderful, thank you so much. Okay, looking at the calendar, seeing where we are, or the agenda, excuse me, and seeing where we are, um, since Ms. Amino is still on and I, and I don't want her, oh, yes, Dave, Penny?
Motion for a five-minute break, because we've, we've all been sitting here for, since what, five o'clock?
I, I'm fine with the break, but how does that work on a Google Meet? Do we?
Mute their camera and microphone and agrees to come back in five minutes, we're probably good.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, before we break though, can I just ask Ms. Amino to stay on, because that, she was helping with the policy and I, I just want her to be able to address any questions, um, if she is available.
I'm here.
Okay, then come back after a five-minute break.
So motion to take a break, uh, to eight thirty.
Okay, then, all in favor?
Yes.
I have one question. Before you hang up, uh, before you take a break, um, what was the exact title of those two new positions? I don't have it in front of me.
I, was it a techn- technology coach, I think is what we were calling it?
Two new coordinator.
Coordinator?
Uh, we, we can call it remote, uh, remote learning, uh, technology coaches or coordinators, either one.
Remote learning, okay, thank you very much.
I think, I think we could work on that, I, I'll work on that with Dr. Wyatt and Dr. Thompson tomorrow to get that specific.
Something in the minutes that made sense, okay.
Okay, I'll be back, people.
Thank you.
Thanks.
After a brief break, uh, next up on our agenda, um, is some policy work, um, again, with the permission of the committee. I just wanna move the agenda around a little bit to respect the time of Ms. Amino, um, who's been looking into some policies along with me. Um, so first of all, Ms. Amino, thank you so much for your help. Um, but so the committee knows in your packet, we do have a model policy that was put out from the MAS C, um, guided some policy issues for the pandemic. And it is a creation of a general interim policy and COVID-related issues, uh, file EBC supplemental. So EBC is actually a policy around emergencies. Now, as is true to a lot of our policy work, our original EBC policy, um, is actually not up to date. So the EPC policy in the Norwood School Committee Manual is from two thousand and three. Um, but the MASC put out a revision in two thousand and fifteen. Now, this policy is not on our agenda to discuss tonight, um, but we will, as a policy subcommittee, with Ms. Amino's help, need to update that over the next couple of weeks, so I just want everybody to be aware of that. Um, the supplemental policy we're discussing tonight is actually a six-page document. Um, and part of it is a brand-new policy, but then in the policy, it references thirty-five other policies that are all potentially impacted by COVID-nineteen. So for anybody who's following us so far over the last couple of months, if you thought that we were not doing a whole lot of work, uh, we are doing a whole lot of work. And the policy before us tonight, it does highlight, when you look at the policy under each one, where they think, um, we might need to, um, amend our current policy. And what the MASC was recommending is that we just approve this policy, we don't go back and edit each one, um, and just put this in place and say for the duration of the pandemic, the pandemic, this, these are our policies. However, as Ms. Amino is gonna tell us about more in just a moment, more of our policies that are referenced are not up to date. Um, so Laurie, do you want to tell us a little bit more?
Sure, um, so, oh, I mean, I don't need to go policy by policy because we could be here for a while longer. But, um, m- m- several of our policies, um, just to highlight a few, uh, like policy, um, JCA, the last time that we had, which is assignment of students to schools. The last time that we, um, amended that was in, uh, two thousand and three, so, um, there's a, a two thousand and nineteen version, um, that, um, if, if we were to update it, then, um, this amendment to EBC, um, would be a temporary amendment to it, would bring us up to date, um, and cover us for this time during COVID. So I think there is some foundational work, um, that we need to do with some of our policies that once we bring those up to the twenty-nineteen version, um, of MASC's recommendations, this, uh, recommended policy, um, of EBC supplemental will then cover us for where we need to be now, current time, um, for COVID.
Right, right, um, and I do know that when we were going through this list, which Priscilla Rittern also helped us with, so I want to thank Priscilla for her help. Um, there's a policy reference in the one that you see from, uh, MASC, IIB, on class size. We actually don't have that policy, so that one we could just strike from the, um, document in front of us. Um, and then in this policy, they also recommend it looking at the MOA, um, with the police department around our school resource officers, and it's also recommended to do some work around handbooks. Um, Dr. Thompson, I think you asked Jill Driscoll to do some looking at the, into the handbooks. Do you know where she is on that? I know she's been working on a lot of things.
Yes, she did, and she made, um, a slight change in them. Uh, I would have to go back. It was a week ago.
Which feels like a year ago. Laurie, do you have in front of you on your list how many policies we identified are not up to date that we have to take a closer look at?
Um, yes, there is one, two, sorry, I don't have the number tallied, but I can tell you right, I can count them up. So there's one, two, um, three, four, five. Looks like ten?
Ten?
Mm-hmm.
So thirty-five policy references, reference, one we're taking off because we don't have it, and then ten out of the other twenty-four, before we can approve this policy, we need to do some work on. So obviously, Ms. Amino has a lot on her plate, otherwise, um, and I appreciate that you helped me get this started. Um, I'm not expecting you to do, you know, we, we can help with this, but, um, just as a full committee, um, he- help me figure out timeline, because like everybody else, there's a lot on my plate and, um, there's a lot that has to be done and we can't not have these policies in place. So if we just voted that the first day of school, September seventeenth, um, we have school committee meetings, uh, August twenty-sixth and September ninth right now, so we would need to have discussions on this at those two meetings. Um, thoughts on the process, thoughts as you are reviewing the policy for tonight? Glad you're not on the policy subcommittee. But Joan, you are.
Yeah.
Well, did, did anything stand out in this policy? I mean, because obviously going back and reviewing and getting caught up is one thing, but did you read anything that you had feedback on that you want us to take into consideration as we move forward? No. One other question, Dr. Thompson, because I'm not sure how to address it. Um, the one thing they did call out was reviewing the MOA with the local police, um, and that's on the second to last page about pathway down. Um, in what is, says the MASC policy is subject to current law or regulation. The superintendent shall report to the school committee of any change in the status of the school or resource officer. If the district eliminates visitors to school during the school day, the SRO may be impacted. Has there been any discussion at this time about whether SROs are staying or not in the school during a hybrid model?
We have not had any discussion about that.
Okay, so we will need to, to work on that.
Right, I would, I would assume that the chief would want to keep the SRO in there, it's not, again, our version of our school resource officer is resource, less officer, uh, and, and doing, uh, community policing, so, um, I don't foresee that changing from our perspective, changing from our incredible police chief, so.
So I know that it was listed on the agenda as a possible first vote of this policy, but obviously we're just not ready to do that on EBC supplemental, um.
Teresa, I'm sorry, Chairwoman, I, I think a lot of these, um, just give like a temporary, um, temporary sort of permission to the superintendent to, um, amend them as needed during COVID and, okay, you know, I know a lot of the other towns are, um, school committees are voting this temporary supplemental in place just for a, um, period of time, a shortened period of time. Um, and that once they resume back into, uh, normal in-person functioning, it, these will be lifted, so that is one way to be thinking about taking this, um, approach of this supplemental. Um, i- i- as we work through all of the changes that need other policies, because, um, nothing here drastically changes our current operating, um, or daily functioning.
So you would, uh, Laurie, still be comfortable recommending the approval of this as the overall, um, for the interim of the pandemic? You don't think we have to go back and update those time policies to the two thousand and nineteen version at this time?
I mean, I think we need to be working at, towards it, um, but I think a lot of, many of these things, um, are being sort of, um, determined by DESC anyway. So they're sort of provide, the guidance is being provided to us by the state. Um, so it's just giving the superintendent the ability to actually implement what is being sort of told of us to be done. Uh, if that make, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, that, my, that was my understanding of this, this memo or policy brief was that it's a temporary thing and it just gives superintendents permission to make what modifications they need to on these policies where needed, and it doesn't require a major policy overhaul necessarily.
No.
Right.
I mean, the major policy overhaul just needs to come in general for Norwood. It's not necessarily, um, in reaction to this supplemental.
Okay, okay, so we could, if the committee wanted to vote on file EBC supplemental as put out by MASC with one change, and that would be the removal of the reference to policy IIB because we do not have that policy in district.
Right.
There a motion to do that? So moved. Thank you, Maive, is there a second? Joan, thank you, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so that does count as our first vote. I will ask, uh, Ms. Rittern to put it up on our website, uh, because first time we vote on policies, open a public comment for two weeks, and then we will put it back on our agenda on August twenty-sixth along with the mask policy that we voted on last week for the second vote. All right. Thank you, Ms. Amino, for your help. Oh, okay, so going back to, um, under lead agenda, um, there was a letter, um, on, for extended day advocacy, um, that we put in there that, uh, Director Chris Capizio wrote, um, Dr. Thompson and I signed it, and I just wanted to share more about this with not only the school committee, but the community. Um, obviously, we heard a lot tonight in public forum, emails about extended day, um, and it's acknowledged in our reopening plan that it's still being evaluated. Um, I'm not going to read this entire letter, it's, it's fairly long. Um, but I do want to pull out a little bit and then happy to address any questions. Um, so our extended day program is pretty unique in how it's under the umbrella of Norwood Public Schools. And not only is it required to follow some, um, DESC guidelines, it also falls under the EUC, the Department of Early Education. Uh, we're not licensed by EUC, but we're funded in part because we have families enrolled in extended day who go through a voucher system. And if we don't follow certain protocol under EUC, then our families cannot, um, apply and qualify for vouchers. Um, and what Ms. Capizio wrote in this letter, um, if you're looking at page two, um, the first paragraph, um, in fall of two thousand and nineteen, the EUC released several reports outlining new mandates for unlicensed federally funded programs, which is the extended day program. Um, as a result, many of the unlicensed funded programs had to withdraw their partnership with EUC as they were unable to meet the mandates in the time allotted and with budgets available during the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year. We have not yet done that, we still have a partnership with EUC. Um, if you scroll down further on page two, you can see, um, that she has identified some costs. So right now, due to COVID, EUC is telling us to continue to run an extended day program in a before and after-school model, okay, this doesn't address the possibility or not of students' remote learning there. This is just strictly before and after school. Um, if we want to continue to run it, we, um, have to do ten hours of online training for every staff member in the extended day program before September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, um, at the cost of about ten thousand dollars. Um, individual cubbies or tubs to contain students' personal effects have to be purchased. Um, she's estimating that will cost five thousand. Every staff member, custodian, food worker who touches the extended day program must undergo BRC, and I admit, I don't know what that stands for, um, through EUC despite having done so already through the public school system. So EUC is requiring some things on top of the DESC requirements to the tune of three thousand five hundred dollars. Um, they are recommending or requiring, excuse me, multiple CPR first aid, uh, certification for staff per site. So if we do, it's, um, expand extended day to each school, elementary school, there's a cost associated with that. Um, and there's also PPE expenses related. Uh, so what Ms. Capizio wrote is that these financial implications do not address the additional mandates having to do with the procurement of extensive documentation from our building and grounds and transportation departments for every bus, bus driver and building we occupy. The extent and level of safety measures makes sense for programs which are licensed under your office. Funded but unlicensed programs should not bear the same burden, especially if their inability to do so results in hundreds, if not thousands, of families losing childcare after what has been one of the hardest years in a half-century. Uh, we are asking you to revise your mandates for unlicensed funded programs and that any grants or scholarships necessary to meet the new EUC reopening requirements be available to all impacted providers, not just licensed programs. So right now, we can't apply for grants as extended day. Um, after four months of no revenue, our program, like so many others, cannot afford to tackle these mandates without financial support and an extension to the timeline provided. Um, it's my understanding that the EUC has a board meeting tomorrow, so, um, Ms. Capizio already submitted this letter that was signed by her, Dr. Thompson and I. Um, and again, we just want the school committee and the school community to be aware of one more challenge that our extended day program faces. Any questions or? And this, this show is being stolen over there, Dr. Thompson.
Yeah, yeah, my mother-in-law's dog is visiting.
Um, questions or, or discussion around the extended day letter? Dr. Thompson, would we be able to put this on the district website? Um, there are a couple people who reached out wanting to be able to have access to this letter when they saw that it was linked to on our agenda.
Oh, I suppose.
Thank you. Maive?
Um, since we're talking about extended day, we did receive several letters from people asking us to approve an extension of the summer program for extended day. Uh, is that something that is being asked of us? Is something, is that something that would even require our vote? Um, and is that something that, um, I, I, and then the other, my other question about that is, you know, I know that there's a lot of time that there are school staff who, who work at extended day. So I don't even know if, you know, once the teachers are back in session, if, if extended, the summer program could go on, I, I just am curious what this is about.
Yeah, I, it is something we need to look at, I'm not sure, um, you know, the conflict would be if the staff were staffing it or then supposed to be working with us in schools, that would be, you know, an issue, but it's definitely something we can ask, uh, Ms. Capizio to, uh, to take a look at. Um, I know that the rec department has also looked at trying to expand their summer program into those, uh, two weeks, but I wasn't going to ask her to start doing that until I had a vote on a starting date for school, so.
But that is more operationally you and, and Ms. Capizio, that does not fall under the authority of, of the school committee.
No, that's.
Extension of the summer program.
Right, yep.
Any further questions or comments on extended day at this time? Okay. So thinking if it's okay with everybody, if we shift to continue the new business discussion, because I think those are relatively, uh, quicker items to move along on our agenda and then we can see what we are like for time around the old business. Um, so last week, we did, um, approve Dr. Thompson's goals. Um, and now we need to, oh, excuse me, evaluation, thank you. I was reading the word goal, yes, evaluation, and now we need to, um, get ready for the next cycle because this is a continuing cycle. Um, because Dr. Thompson was rated as proficient, uh, bless you. Um, we do have the ability as the school committee to decide, um, to go forth with a two-year cycle. So that's the one thing we want to talk about tonight, do we want the next school cycle to be one year as it has been? Or are we ready to shift to a two-year cycle? And then the second thing we want to figure out tonight is who, um, is the team that'll be working with Dr. Thompson in September, not in August, but in September, to, um, prepare the goals for that cycle. Uh, so first, discussion around how long we want the cycle to be? Yeah, Dave.
So I find it really funny that, you know, we've always had challenges with, you know, year to year to year, we're always playing catch-up, and now finally we're at the point where we can do two years, but. But as much I'd like to advocate for two years, how can we plan two years ahead when we don't know what's going to happen in a couple of months? So I'm sorry, Dave, but you're gonna have to be on a one-year plan on a short leash.
It, that, it's a valid concern. I mean, if we, if we do decide to go two years, remember the one thing with the MASC process that they revised. Is there still would be that mid uh mid-cycle check-in, so there would still be some assessment at the one year. But that's valid, that if we go two years, the pandemic will color what we do.
I'm saying, how do we set goals for two years? That's really difficult. What are your thoughts, Dave?
Well, I mean, it, I mean, it is something that normally in a, in a two-year cycle, you, you recalibrate the goals at the, at the midway point, so. So you add more, you either say, okay, you met that one, or extend it out, or depending. I mean, and you know, honestly, the goal should be based on, on the strategic plan, so.
Okay. So, um, well, I'll let more discussion occur before I make a motion.
Okay, Maya or Joan? Thoughts? Anybody want to make a motion? Dave?
I'll make a motion that we create goals for the superintendent uh on a two-year basis. But at midpoint, we will reevaluate those goals because of the impact of the pandemic.
I'll second that motion. Thank you, Maya, for the discussion on a two-year cycle with a mid-cycle check-in at one year and reevaluating the pandemic.
Wait, that wasn't how I understood that motion.
No.
Are you setting goals for two, for two years or we?
So, so, so we, we have a strategic plan. We have goals for two years.
Yeah.
And after year one, we're going to adjust those. I mean, they're still the same learning goals we have to do. You know, and, and we're gonna, basically, it's, we're just not going through the evaluation process at the end of one year.
Yeah, that's how I understood your motion, but that's not how I understood what Teresa said, as long as we're on the same page. In any case, I'd like to make.
I thought I said the same thing, so what did I say that was different?
Okay, it doesn't matter because now we're all on the same page. Um, but I would actually like to discuss whether or not it has to be a time-bound goal, goal resetting. Um, I'd like to actually think about whether or not it makes more sense to set goals for the duration of the pandemic. And then reassess then with a no line, no longer than two years.
I think the guy.
Not evaluation goal, just the goals.
Yeah, um. I haven't seen anything from DESI, MASC, or MAS come out changing the overall valuary system that they, is that even a word, valuary? I think it is. System that they.
It is now.
I don't know, it sounded good in my head. Um, but the system that they put out, um, that we started to use this last round. I haven't seen any revision to that, but what that set, what that system said is either two-year goals or one-year goals. In terms of when you do the actual evaluation process that we just went through. Um, but either way, you do have a mid-cycle check-in. So I'm trying to reconcile the time base that they're saying with, with what you just said, Joan, about the pandemic. I, I don't have the answer.
Okay, then I'll just retract that suggestion.
Maya?
Um, I am in favor in general of the idea of two-year goals, but I, I wonder if maybe we should like say that that's what we think we want to do. But then, eh, you know, we need to look and see what goals might actually make sense. And, and then when we vote on goals, perhaps we'll decide that. Two years just doesn't make sense, but, but I think we should try for that.
Okay, so targeted two-year cycle, but then the team that works on the goals, obviously, with this will lead to a lot of robust discussion and decisions.
Yeah.
Okay, is, I think that's all still in alignment with what Dave Catania had put as a motion, yes?
Yeah. Yeah. I don't think he did change that.
No, and um, Maya, did you second that? I'm just trying to keep track of where we are in motion.
I think I did.
She did.
Okay, so any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's. So now we need to determine two people who are going to work with Dr. Thompson, starting in early September, to prepare these goals. Um, I am willing to be one of those people, um, but I will tell you, whoever says they want to be the second person. I would probably ask that in terms of like the note-taking, preparation of documents, that, that be the other person who works on this. Um, just because there's a lot on my plate.
I'll be the third person.
Yeah, that's great. We just, we just need two because we can't have a quorum.
I know, I know. Um, Teresa, I'd love to help you, but I'm really not the best taking notes.
Okay, Dave.
I am unable due to the, we'll be in negotiations for the teachers' union again very, very shortly.
Um.
Are you sure, Maya?
Yep, yep, I can do it.
I do want you to feel like you have to, it's a process of elimination here.
Wait a minute.
We could always recommend Anne Marie. She's not here. That's, that's the penalty.
I wouldn't do that to anybody.
Is Joan, is that a motion? Because I'll vote for it. Why not?
No, it's not a motion.
Okay, so is like, is there a motion that uh Maya and I work with Dr. Thompson, starting in September, on his goals for the next cycle?
So moved.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Joan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We could have voted it down. It could have been two-two and then it would go away.
No, it doesn't go away. It just means next meeting.
Yes, within the same motion couldn't come forth. I think that's how Robert roles work. I don't know, but Maya and I will do that. Thank you. Oh, so back to the agenda, new business. Um, we do have two contracts on the agenda that we have discussed already in executive sessions. Uh, Dr. Thompson and, and Dave Catania have worked on these contracts. Um, do one of you want to give us a quick overview on the administrative assistance contract that we're looking for a vote on tonight?
Sure, if I can get it up. There we go. Um, so we have, um. We have negotiated basically a three-year contract language-wise, but only one year of um. Of salary because of the pandemic uncertainty. Um, and that uh increase was a 2% uh for this next year.
Any questions on that contract? Is there a motion to approve the administrative assistance contract?
So moved.
Thank you, Maya. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Dave, for the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, four zero. Um, and then, Dr. Thompson, do you want to give us the overview of the senior custodians contract?
Yes, we have wrapped up the senior custodians. Uh, did manage to uh clean up some contract language. And once again, consistent with our budgeting guidelines, there is a, um, we're only looking at next year. And that is, again, a 2% uh COLA for the senior custodians.
Okay. There are motions to approve that contract, the senior custodians?
So moved.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second? Thank you, Maya. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we accomplished all of new business, policy, superintendent's report. The uh item remaining on our agenda is the Nord Schools Listen Initiative that we talked about now. Couple meetings ago, can't remember exactly when, and in July, um, and it was on the agenda for last week. But last week, meeting was very busy and this got pushed. So in your pocket, there are some follow-up um responses from our attorney. Answering the questions that was raised at our last meeting. Um, you can also see that Dr. Wyatt had put together a folder about the vocals of school SEO climate survey that we discussed. Um, through DESI. Um, Dr. Wyatt also began to draft some open-ended questions for our review. And then I also added a document in there um from the Department of Education. That talks about improving outcomes for all students, strategies and considerations to increase student diversity. Um, which this is a document that our attorney, our attorney actually recommended, um, that we review and be familiar with. So obviously, this is a big topic with a lot of work ahead in the middle of a very busy time. I did realize that. Um. Dr. Thompson, is there a specific guidance that would be helpful from the school committee this evening? You know, as you finalize the hybrid model details, what else do you want to work on?
Yeah, exactly. Um, well, I mean, this obviously is uh important work. Um, you know, it's how best to collect. You know, the, the information and, and start the process. Meaning. You know, I, I, I'll be honest with you, I, I don't think between now and the, and the 14th or 15th of September, I'm going to be able to personally. Or any of my mystery team put any uh energy into it. That doesn't mean we can't start. Getting information from, from folks.
Thoughts from the committee as we review the feedback from our attorney and the other work that Dr. Wyatt started? Or, or Dr. Wyatt, as you looked into things more, um, do you have an additional recommendation?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think based on the last conversation you all had around this topic. It made a lot of sense to me that you start small and then get some, some fundamental information. Um, about things that are, you know, are, are pretty broad. And then based on that information, you drill down deeper. You know, I think it was Joan that, that said that. I'm not sure who it was, but I, but it makes a lot of sense to me that we not overbite right now. And that we sort of just start with some very fundamental, broad brush types of questions. Which is what I tried to do with the questions I submitted. And then, uh, and they're open-ended, so they shouldn't be too many. They should be easy to, to review and um code. And then you develop a more um, a more quality, I'm sorry, quantitative survey. Based on that qualitative data, you know. So that's, that, that's my advice, you know, is not to overbite, start small, but ask some really important, fundamental questions that get at the heart of the matter. You know, or, or will set you up to get at the heart of the matter.
And Dr. Wyatt, if you had drafted eight questions, were you seeing this as like what you would recommend me go forward or the start to the questions?
Yeah, I mean, those were, those were questions that sort of seemed kind of powerful to me, but, you know, you guys can do what you think best. But um, I, I thought those would yield some pretty interesting data, information.
So I'll just quickly read the questions so um people at home know what we're talking about. So uh, Dr. Thompson had, or Dr. Wyatt, excuse me, had drafted eight open-ended questions to get the Nord Schools Listen Initiative started. Uh, question one is overall and in general, does your child student look forward to going to school? And the answers would be yes, no, not sure. Um, if no, please explain why she does not look forward to going to school. Uh, question two, does your child student feel welcomed by the adults in his or her school? Again, yes, no, not sure. If not, please explain why by providing specific examples or details. Uh, question three, does your child student feel included by adults in his school, his or her school? Yes, no, not sure. Um, if not, please explain why providing specific examples or details. Question four, does your child student feel welcomed by other students in his or her school? filing the same format as previous questions. Question five, does your child student feel included by other students in his or her school? Question six, over the past two or three, Dr. Thompson had both in there, years, Dr. Wyatt, sorry. Do you feel your child student was mistreated, disrespected, or not appreciated by adults in the school because of his or her race, color, national origin, religion, sex, gender identity? Or physical disability? Question seven, over the past two to three years, do you feel your child student was mistreated, disrespected, or not appreciated by other students in the school? Because of his or her race, color, national origin, religion, sex, gender identity, or physical disability? And question eight, do you believe that your child student's curriculum or instructional materials are biased or not inclusive of your child student's identity? So what do the committee, what does the committee think on those questions? Maya?
I really like the questions. I just, I think we had also talked about having sort of um. Setting expectations for that, like, that we do have um modes to file formal complaints. And that this is not the, you know, I think we were thinking this was not for that. Um, or, you know, not, which isn't to say that somebody couldn't do both, certainly. And um, and then to just make it clear who would be reviewing these, that this would be. Reviewed by the, I believe we had decided that this had to be reviewed by the administration because it's quite possible that there would be. Some student privacy things that would be. Revealed in this.
Yeah, and I did follow up with our attorney about that, um. She had written back that the suggestion for admin or HR person was that the person reviewing coding and compiling data needs to be trained to recognize certain things. And also be able to maintain a level of confidentiality. Uh, with proper training, someone other than an administrator could do this, but whoever does this does need to be trained. Um, this could be done by a school committee member as well, as long as that person was trained about what to look for in terms of possible complaints or behaviors. That would trigger a response from the district and also how to report out information. Um, so that, that was her response. Um, I also asked her, because I think Joan had asked the question. Um, you know, could we use the partnership with Northeastern, have a grad student do this? Um, she said, I think, yes, Melissa, the attorney, um, especially a grad student. But this is likely going to be a year-long project, so not just the survey, but the whole initiative. Um, at least in its initial data gathering phase, and so you need someone who can commit to that. Um, but if you have um the pages of legal advice.
And again, in terms of a workload situation, I think that makes a lot of sense to me. Because quite frankly, I can't think of any administrator that would have time to go through that data, code it all and do everything at this point. So I think really do need outside help with that and, and, you know, a, a really good grad would be an excellent project for that person. And it could be done, you know, respecting confidentiality and all of that.
Joan, can I ask your professional expertise, since you work with grad students and oversee them in projects? Um, do you have any further ideas how this could work or have you changed your perspective on it?
So I disagree with a lot of what Melissa's assessment is, and I'm uncomfortable doing that. Because um, I, I don't believe in disagreeing with our attorney. Like, we pay our attorney for her legal advice. Um, and therefore, and I am not a lawyer. Um, so my, my opinion carries last week, in my view, than hers, so I'm a little bit uncomfortable with her guidance. Um, in terms of the, the technical pieces of it. Um, I, it, it has been, uh, Northeastern does not view this as a conflict of interest. As long as, I have to put this caveat out there, as long as I am able to utilize. The aggregated de-identified data in my curriculum or in my coursework somewhere. Or that I'm able to write up a report about it and that gets published. It has to somehow be within the scope of my duties, which should not be a problem as long as you all don't have a problem with it. Um, that, that is, we have a, we have a number of faculty, a number of programs who would benefit from this type of a case study. Um, and so I could certainly do that type of work and that's not a problem. Um, in terms of the coding, we do have, I have access to the software, which would make the coding happen a lot faster. Um, so those, those are the technical pieces. Could we find a grad student? Probably. Could we get a grad student for a whole year? Nope, um, not through, not through my kind of partnerships. Um, but could we get a series of graduate students over the course of the year? Probably. Um, yeah, so that would just be required, that would just require us technically to kind of divvy up pieces of the report. So maybe a question at a time gets done, um, or two or three questions at a time get done. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Okay, that's helpful. I know, I know it's a huge project. I know it's a huge initiative. I mean, I, I do still personally feel the same that I did at the last meeting about this being very important and moving forward. Um. But I do not have the, the answers of how best to move forward. Maya?
Can we, can we ask, you know, can we make a motion or something to say like, let's ask? Like, let's ask Joan to, to, to work on how this might work and come back to us with more of a proposal? Because I do think that using something like that would be um. You know, a good idea, and then maybe we can feed it back once we have a little bit more of a formal proposal. And, and, you know, I know Joan has read Melissa's guidance, that maybe once we could perform. Like, propose something more specific. once we could perform, like, propose something more specific, maybe then Melissa could share if she has specific concerns with it, because like maybe part of our problem right now is everything's too nebulous.
Joan, I know when you, when the grad students helped us with some policy work, you did type up a proposal and we voted on that. Do you have the bandwidth to do that or, or what is your timeline?
I, I do. I, how much of this can we discuss in specificity right now with this? Is any of this under, we, it's all open, right? I, I, I str- I'm struggling a little bit with the her concerns about being forward-thinking. I am concerned about, um, quite frankly, given that the attorney is hedging a little bit, I'm concerned about my own personal liability. If I would be covered if a complaint was, was um raised. Um, and I'm happy to provide my background, but where we have this kind of tepid, what I'm reading as tepid, I, I concerns here around complaints, I would like to see stronger language from the attorney, that I would be covered for any liability should, you know, I go forth and, and do this work. I'd also would like to s- know what the attorney thinks is uh, if, if that changes, given that we, um, one of the conditions was that the um names would be de-identified. So the, the, the data that I got would have no, like, an administrator would have to go through and delete all names. And but so then I would get the redacted information to do around that. Um, and then I, I, I'm interested in her, and this might just be me being a little bit snooty. But I'm interested in her training that she is talking about because i- in my mind, the coding and the pulling out the themes is actually the harder piece to treat on um, and not the complaints pieces. So I'd be interested in, in what exactly type of training she's talking about that for. Or if it would make sense for this to be um, one of those things where speaking off the fly, um, I'm, I'm wondering if we could do actually two sets of coding. Um, and you know what? I'll just type up a proposal and I'll send it to you. My questions are.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I mean, Chris, uh, you know, then we can send it back to, to Melissa and.
I'll, yeah, I'll shoot, I'll shoot an email and I'll copy everybody on it tomorrow, just with what my further questions are for the attorney.
Yeah, I, I, if I could, I think my gut tells me the attorney's talking about confidentiality training, but I could be wrong on that. And, and certainly we could have the administration redact, you know, any personally, you know, identifiable information. So that the graduate students are really dealing with, you know, just very clean data.
Yeah.
There'd be no concerns over, yeah.
So, um, the long-term agenda needs to be worked on in a number of ways over the next couple of weeks and the upcoming meetings. It's, it's been very fluid uh, based off of how our meetings have been going. There's a number of things already that I have to talk to Dr. Thompson about for our August twenty-sixth meeting. What is the expectation of the committee in terms of when we talk about this again? Is it the August twenty-sixth meeting? Is it the September ninth meeting? What is the will of the committee?
I'd like to August twenty-sixth, but I don't know, off the top of my head, what else we have in the agenda. I expect it's gonna be a lot.
I would say it's not gonna be a short agenda.
Then we better have the meeting after though.
Uh, Joan, does that give you a time? Well, I'm just trying to think. I, I'm not sure what the process is on your end with, with the grad students and everything.
Well, I mean, really, the first step is going to be collecting the data. So we really just need to get the data, we just need to get an agreement that the data is going to be collected. And then from there, we can, um, to be honest, we wouldn't have students until January at the earliest to be able to help us if we started collecting data in September. But that kind of makes sense anyway, if you're doing a six to eight week data collection period. We'd be rolling into the Thanksgiving timeframe and then we'd really, it would, that would give the administration potentially some time to de-identify over winter break. You know, create a vaccine, an inoculation schedule for all of our kids for January one, when the vaccine is going to be ready. And then um, we could start looking at that data in January.
So it sounds like the first step is the questions. While you work on the proposal and we can figure out the timeline of when, you know, it goes to Melissa and comes back to us and all that. Maya had made a, a statement that she was okay with the questions, but what are other thoughts on the questions that Dr. Wyatt had drafted for us? Dr. Thompson, can I ask, um, you know, previous rounds of this, the questions, we, we did reach out to the administrators for their feedback. I don't believe they've seen this. And again, I realize everything that they are working on. It's just eight questions. I think it's a little easier to, to review that than the last round of questions we sent them. But what would your recommendation be in terms of the principle C and the is before we vote on them?
I, I mean, I think they're fine. I think they address um what the concerns were originally, getting some future-looking information for us to, uh, to build on. You know, and you know, I, 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 I don't foresee us having a lot of time between now and the middle to end of October, to be honest with you, so.
When you say now to the middle of October, you mean to even send it out or?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, we've got, we have a, we basically have half a year's amount of work to do in six or seven weeks, so, yeah.
Yeah, Dave, Dave, I think what we could do is certainly share the questions with the administrative team and just make sure they're comfortable with them. I mean, I, I don't have any strong ownership in those questions, so if they need to be tweaked in any way, you know, feel free to tweak them, but or just sort of conceptually, it, it kind of made sense to me. But yeah, we should run it by the admin team, I think, you know.
Could, could you do that, Dr. Wyatt and, um, or Dr. Wyatt through Dr. Thompson? Collect some feedback before our next meeting? Okay. Any further discussion on this topic at this time? Okay, so I believe we accomplished everything on our agenda. We already were in executive session. We do not have to go back into executive session. I do not see any donations. Is that correct, Dr. Thompson?
That is correct.
So at this time, we have school committee addenda. Um, Joan, do you want to go first?
I was all riled up at the beginning and now I'm just tired. Okay. So my addenda is actually in the form of a letter to Governor Baker and Commissioner Riley. And I wrote this when I was so angry about having to make the decisions that we had to make today. So four and a half months. You had four and a half months to provide guidelines and try to find funding. I acknowledge this is an unprecedented situation and the logistical complexity of this is a nightmare. But you had four and a half months. Businesses around the world have pivoted and made changes. We are still waiting for guidance on an LMS and some remote learning guidance. We got transportation guidance last week. There are vague promises that some things will be covered and reimbursed, but no one will say what is actually reimbursable and what is not. You're still revising the inadequate and untimely by guidance that you've put out. It's unfathomable to me that you did not know that we would need remote learning or busing or something different from the status quo during a pandemic. No vaccine has ever been forecasted until at least early twenty-twenty-one, and no treatment options have ever been expected to miraculously appear. For four months, it has been apparent to everyone who's associated with the schools on the ground that we will need some form of remote learning. It's obvious that public education can't meet the current public health guidelines. When was the last time you've been in a public elementary school? Been in a classroom and watched kindergarten teachers make sure that kids could open their lunches? Been at a high school and dealt with students in crisis or walked through the halls of a middle school? Have you ever watched lunch at an elementary school before you issued your guidance? How could you think we could stagger entrances and exits? We just spent the past decade fortifying our schools. If you had been paying attention, you would have known what everyone on the ground knew a long time ago. Schools will have to go remote in some fashion in order to meet public safety guidelines, in order to keep kids, teachers, and communities safe. I do hope we get some guidance on remote learning and LMS requirements last week, next week, which is mid-August, by the way. And that this guidance doesn't get pushed out and delayed as so many others have. You know what's making this even harder? Systemic inequities, continued refusal to invest in the infrastructure of education, outdated tax laws, and unfunded mandates that push local communities and school systems to the brink of financial ruin on an annual basis. You've had decades to address those issues, decades. I'm not sure why I'm surprised at the inaction around this current public health crisis. We've constantly underfunded public education and expected it to solve all of society's ills. Do you know what the biggest concern was about closing schools in March? Making sure kids who rely on the free and reduced lunches to eat could eat. It's still one of my biggest concerns. A few months before that, I was sitting in meetings with police and administrative officials talking about safeties in school. Not just preparing for active shooters, but also how to help students who are depressed and have crippling anxiety. How much funding have you provided for this? Where's your guidance there? Have you provided any integrated or systemic solutions like improving access to mental health providers for kids under eighteen? Or providing better-paying jobs for parents so the kids can eat? You've had decades to address these issues, or at least to provide the funding to schools who are expected to scoop up all the parts of society that don't function and fix them with no money. Oh, also while educating our kids. The curriculum and goals of public education and its value to a functional democracy, these issues have become an afterthought. All we've gotten is Band-Aids bought on credit, told that the check is in the mail, but the mail never comes. You've had decades to fix this on so many different levels. But again, why would we expect anything different in this public health crisis? So come out with your guidance that just complicates matters and give us your unrealistic deadlines and your promises that funding is coming. Local communities will keep picking up the check, both financially in terms of our community's well-being. Why should we expect anything different this time? That's it.
I know I'm not supposed to comment on your addendum, but um, if you want anyone else to sign your letter with you, I will sign that. But also take ownership and send it on your own, because that was very great. Thank you, Joan. Uh, Dave Catania?
So no one can comment on my addendum, so, because I was gonna ask you last, but okay. Uh, so thank you, Dr. Thompson and your team for the extensive hard work in creating a hybrid model for reopening our schools. I recognize that in-person learning is essential to student growth and achievement. I recognize that students need and deserve to be in school. I recognize that many of our students depend on our schools for vital services beyond their education. I've heard from many parents have recognized that the impossible challenge of caring for their students while having to work outside the home, and it is heartbreaking. While I voted against the hybrid plan in favor of full remote learning, I also recognize that the hybrid plan was the best plan we could design with what we currently know and the few options that we have at our disposal. The following remarks were prepared before this meeting. If I was convinced to vote for the hybrid plan, I would not be reading them to you now, to you now. Tonight, as the number of confirmed COVID-nineteen cases in America exceeds five million, with over a hundred and sixty-three thousand lives lost to the pandemic, we're planning on how to safely reopen our schools. School committees should not be making this decision. Local boards of health should not be making these decisions. States and governors should not be making these decisions. The federal government is pushing our country to reopen schools in an election year without any plan, very little guidance, even less in funding, and they have not provided us with any personal protective equipment. We live in the greatest economy in human history, yet due to a pattern of negligence and malfeasance by the federal administration, we cannot even obtain enough fifty-cent N-ninety-five respirators to protect our students and staff. We were elected to sit on this committee and oversee three things. The policies of our school system, the budget of our school system, and the evaluation of the superintendent of our school system. But there is one overarching duty of this position that now takes precedent in this unprecedented time. The safety and security of our community and of this great nation. The bullets have not been fired and cities have not been bombed. We are at war. Make no mistake, we are at war with this virus. In just five months, Massachusetts has lost nearly seven times as many citizens than to the nineteen years of warfare in Vietnam. We must not draft our teachers, paraprofessionals, administrative assistants, maintenance workers, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, and administrators and put them in danger. Our teachers have the same demographics as the rest of the country, with about one-third over the age of fifty. Putting them in a higher-risk category should they be infected. This is unacceptable. In a study that came out just yesterday by the American Academy of Pediatrics, it was reported that nearly one hundred thousand children tested positive for COVID-nineteen in just the last two weeks of July. Though children are not the ones filling the ICU beds, there's mounting evidence that they're asymptomatic carriers and spreaders of the virus. There is no cure yet, and there might not be one for a while. The only way we can beat this is to stop spreading, to, to stop the spread by limiting personal contact. Until we have proper protective equipment, I will vote for remote learning. Until we have available rapid testing for all our students, I will vote for remote learning. Until we have the proper funding to keep our students, faculty, and talent safe, I will vote for remote learning.
Thank you, Dave. Maya?
Um, I want to thank everybody, my fellow committee members for the, the excellent discussions that we've had about this. I want to thank all the the people who have um shared their opinions with us and um, and I want everyone to know that I read lots about this. I read everyone's email that sent me them. I considered many, many issues and um, and it's incredibly frustrating that there's no good solution to any of this and um, but I do thank everybody for participating in the, in the discussion. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Maya. Um, I have a whole bunch of like chicken scratch notes over here, none of which make any sense to me at the moment. And I, and I said a couple of things already throughout our discussion tonight, um, but I, I know the vote we took tonight will, will not solve everything. And I, and I know that there's a population out there that wishes we voted differently. And I know that the vote we took tonight is contingent still upon a lot over the next two weeks. And I know how frustrating that is for our community when we say we don't know all the answers or things might change. You know, hopefully what you're hearing from all of us is that we don't like the situation either. And we are, you know, just as stressed, if not more, in the roles right now. And also for many of us also as parents, so there's the dual stress of personal decisions, which are not part of this discussion, but also then the professional decisions that we need to make on behalf of the school committee and the school district. There's two dueling voices in my, in my head constantly, the public health hat and the child development hat. And as I said earlier, they, they don't always agree. And it's, it's a really hard situation. Over the last couple of days, a number of my friends um outside of Norwood who know that I'm on a school committee in Norwood have been reaching out to me to um vent and complain about their horrible and evil school committees in, in their towns and cities. Um, and I don't think I was the most sympathetic ear because I said, hold up, let me tell you. Pretty much everything Joan just said in her letter, very articulate, you know, very articulate, Joan. But I've been having conversations with friends outside of Norwood and trying to help people across the state understand the situation localities are in and the leadership we're not getting that Joan and Davey both hit on tonight. And I have no answer for that, other than we continue to persevere, we continue to advocate, we continue to do the best we can, and I just hope the, the Norwood community, even if you don't agree with every decision, you will support us and you will help us advocate. And if you email us, which you definitely can, please also ask us, what advocacy do we need you to take part on? Because there is a lot that we need with the state and the federal government. So on that note, a very long meeting, uh, my family thought by starting early, we'd be done early, and I told them, no way. The more time you give us, the more time we, uh, we seem to utilize. Uh, but thank you for everybody for being here. Officially, we meet again on August twenty-sixth. No offense. I hope we do not need to meet before then, although we have subcommittee work, negotiation work, task force work to be done in the interim. So at this time, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Let's stay on night.
Dave, may the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Maya. All in favor?
All right.
Joan, did you motion to leave? Okay. Good night, everybody, and um, stay as safe as you can.
Good night.